Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of a regular city council here in Titusville to order on March 11th, 2025 at 6:30. Thank you all for being here. Now I'd like to bring up Breann Robinson, who will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Bow your heads with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. Father, I thank you for the day that you've given us, the day that you've made. I thank you for this meeting, for each council member who are serving our community, for each citizen who has come. Father, I just pray that your face will shine upon us and that your countenance will be with us. Father, may you bring peace as we make discussion, as we make plans, but you ultimately will direct our paths. We commit this time to you and we thank you for this incredible city that you've placed us in, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do we have a quorum? Thank you. City Clerk?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney, if you would, please read the rules of decorum for our members here today.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and refrain from actions that disrupt the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinder the council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings or shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted time has expired. As these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceeding of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply as cautioned shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from their chambers who poses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's rights created by the Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We have a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. Item 9A, which is SSA 8, 2024, for the property located at 1717 Barna Avenue, Royal Manor Townhouses. The applicant has requested to table that to your next meeting on 27 March, 2025. He's under the weather.
City Manager, I see the applicants here.
Yep.
The applicants are actually here, so I just...
Correct. Mr. Honeycutt is the one who called to table.
Just wanted to confirm. Thank you. Any others?
Yes, sir. Item 12C, which is the Natural Resources Public Engagement item. Staff is requesting to table that as well to the 27th of March.
Thank you. Sorry, I got 6C and 12C confused, so I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Minutes, everybody get a chance to review the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
We're going to need motions on both of the items tabled to the date and time to be tabled.
I'd like to make a point of order on the minutes because I spoke during those minutes and I had spoken very clearly and at length about the letter that Stuart Buchanan sent to me and the way that he tried to work around the method we have for setting people on a board. It was a serious accusation. And the minutes say Kathleen O'Rourke discussed a letter she received from Stuart Buchanan regarding the board appointments, et cetera. She provided the letter to staff of the public record. That says nothing, and that's been consistent. So what I would like to request that you do is use AI to create the minutes so that they're complete and not full of just basically nothing.
Thank you very much for your point of order. Member Nelson, can you make the motion for the tabling?
Move to table 9A. I think it's 9A. No, starting with 9A.
Which is SSA number 8, 2024, 1717 Barna Avenue, Royal Manor Townhomes.
Right. Move that to the next meeting on March 27th.
That's 6:30. Here.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second of tabling that item. Any further discussion? Any cards? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then, just looking for the other.
It's item 12C, which is the Natural Resources Public Engagement.
Move to table 9... 12C to the next meeting, 3/27.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Any cards? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now on to the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on February 11th, 2025.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Any cards? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Onto Special Recognition and Presentations. You're on item 5A, which is Etna's Contract and Plan Management Overview presented by One Digital and Bush Robinson Consulting.
All right.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Gina Lachini and I am your benefits consultant with One Digital Robinson Bush. I'm going to be providing an overview of the Etna contracts and the plan management. Thank you. So, today's objectives, as a follow-up to the inquiries from... Oh, this is not... Okay, all right. So today's objectives. So, we're going to provide an overview of the plan management history. I have been involved with the City of Titusville as an employee benefits consultant since 2018, so I'm able to speak to the RFP process, how Etna was awarded the contract for several of the employee benefit plans. I'm going to outline those current contracts, the fees, how we're reporting and measuring the effectiveness of Etna, and then compliance considerations, since I know those were brought up regarding pharmacy. And then, to finish up, I'm going to be reviewing some actionable opportunities as well as address any questions from the city council members. So, just a high-level overview of your Robinson-Bush, One Digital consulting team. You have your local presence. My name is Gina Lachini, so I'm your primary consultant. And then I have Rick McGill here with me as well. He is the principal or senior client executive. And then as well, we have Chris Lor. He is our senior financial consultant. In addition to the local support, we also have national resources that I've included here, ranging from actuarial to pharmacy. So just wanted to provide that information. On the next slide, we have information about the RFP history. So there's been several RFPs that Robinson-Bush, One Digital has assisted the City of Titusville with throughout the years. In 2011 is when Robinson-Bush, Inc. was contracted with the City of Titusville as the employee benefits consultant. Our primary role was to assist with stop-loss or reinsurance coverage for the self-funded health plan, and then to assist with the Medicare retiree plans. In 2015, we provided a joint RFP with Brevard County Government and awarded that contract to Cigna. There were Etna Medicare Advantage plans already in place, so we negotiated those renewals as well. In 2017, there was an Employee Assistance Program, or EAP, RFP awarded to Etna, so we provided assistance in that RFP. The Health Plan, or ASO, the Administrative Services Only RFP, was implemented in 2019, and that was awarded to Etna. There were significant savings with that, so I'll be going over a recap of that medical RFP, the Health Plan, ASO RFP. In 2021, there was a consulting RFP for employee benefit consultants, and that was awarded to One Digital Robinson-Bush. To provide a little bit of context on the One Digital Robinson Bush co-branded name, Robinson-Bush, Inc. was acquired by One Digital in 2020, so when we proposed in 2021, it was a joint branded. And then in '23, we assisted with the self-funded dental plan and COBRA administration RFP, and that was awarded to Etna with some significant savings over a five-year period. And then in 2024, we did a Medicare RFP, actually transitioning away from Etna to other more competitive options for the city's advantage. So that's just an overview of the RFPs throughout the years. Digging a little bit deeper into the Health Plan, ASO Services RFP, again, that was effective 10/1/2019, and the prior administrator was Cigna for many years. Proposals were received from Etna, Cigna, Humana, Florida Healthcare Plan, and HealthSmart. Through the evaluation of the public RFP process, Etna and Cigna were shortlisted for onsite discount verifications. That's a process where we go onsite to the carrier and we have to sign NDAs, and we're able to pull up their contracts, both on the medical and pharmacy side, speaking to, you know, verifying the discounts that they included in their proposal. It's a pretty strenuous process, and we did that to ensure that the proposals were as accurate as possible to the costs that the city would incur. The financial outcomes, there were significant savings on the administrative fee side compared to the Cigna, the shortlisted vendor, as well as Cigna, the primary, or the incumbent prior to. The pharmacy pricing guarantees were also estimated to increase savings by $337,000, so that improved pharmacy discounts and rebates over a three-year period by moving to Etna from Cigna. When we did the onsite verification, we were able to reprice the claims, and so repricing those claims, both Etna and Cigna were very competitive, but with the pharmacy pricing reconciliation, that kind of, that led Etna to be having more significant savings. Etna also includes an annual wellness fund, and then performance guarantees are also included in the contract. They were a part of the first year of the contract, and since there are pharmacy guarantees, but the medical discounted guarantees were for the first year. Moving on to the dental, so this was also awarded to Etna. Prior to Etna, the city was contracted with Preferred Benefits Administrators, PBA. That was a contract that was in place for many years. We went through the public procurement process. Proposals were received from Etna, Cigna, Humana, MetLife, and PBA, the incumbent. Etna, Cigna, and Humana were selected as finalists. We had the finalists come in and do presentations to the committee members, and Etna was ultimately selected the RFP award for offering the lowest cost with an additional $116,000 in savings over five years. Etna also includes their COBRA administration at no additional charge, and those fees are guaranteed flat through 2028. The Employee Assistance Program, the city intended to align those EAP services with the Etna Master Services Agreement. That was, however, processed incorrectly at the time and indicated the three-year renewal through November 30th of 2024. So just to provide a little context on that. Amendment two was issued to try to correct that term error, extending the current EAP rates through November 30th of 2025 of this year. For your current EAP rates, that is a breakdown there of $2.63 per employee per month, or PEPM. The breakdown is $2.49 for the EAP six-visit model, which is the mental health benefits available to all employees. And then Work-Life Services was also added at 14 cents per employee per month. Your utilization of counseling services among employees is extremely high. However, the Work-Life Services don't quite have very high utilization, so that might be something to consider removing in the future. And then your current benefit contracts, just to provide a high-level overview of those, several are with Etna. However, your FSA, Life and Disability, Medicare Advantage, Medicare Part D Prescription Drug Plan, Medicare Supplement Plan, On-Site Clinic, and Vision are all through other carriers, so Etna does hold the COBRA, Dental, EAP, and Medical and Pharmacy. On the next slide, I go into more detail around this Etna contract specifically and their term dates and their start dates. So, your Medicare Advantage Plan through Etna ended at the end of 2024. That was awarded to Humana. So, that contract is no longer with Etna, and that was with them since 2011, so it was a change for members. EAP is still in place. That's been in place since 2017, and again, that was renewed through the November 30th of 2025. The Medical and Pharmacy ASO Administrative Services Only has been in place since 2019 and does have contract renewals through 2027. There was a renewal that was just put in place for the pharmacy, and I'll talk more about that as well in the next slide, but that was just completed for the 10/1 plan year beginning in 2024. Dental, that is, like I mentioned on the previous slide, those fees are guaranteed flat at no increases through 2028, September 30, 2028. And then COBRA, as I mentioned also, those are included in that dental ASO fee, so no fee increases through that contract period. On the next slide, I have some information regarding PBM compliance. That is definitely a space where there is a lot of movement and transparency, and it's needed. So, contract adjustments were made to the Etna contract. They are owned by CVS, so there are some conflicts of interest that may come up with that. But part of Senate Bill 1550 is to ensure that there aren't those conflicts of interest and transparency and accountability with PBMs. So, due to being in a guarantee period prior to 10/1/24, that law did not apply until the next renewal date. So, beginning in October 1st of 2024 is when those requirements of the law went into place. With that, there were several changes to be compliant, so removal of spread pricing, which is more behind the scenes between the manufacturers and the pharmaceutical benefit managers, the PBMs. So that's, that was removed as part of Senate Bill 1550, so Etna and CVS can no longer have those with their contracts with the manufacturers. 100% of rebates must be passed through to the City of Titusville, so any rebates that are earned are passed through 100%. They're not retained by Etna. And then the specialty network cannot be exclusive to CVS. As I mentioned, that's a conflict of interest, so that's been removed. And then voluntary mail-order pharmacy, that's also to prevent conflicts of interest with making sure that mail-order prescriptions are not being directed just to CVS-owned facilities. And then the next slide, this has some financial information going over the latest renewal. On the left-hand side are the fixed administrative fees, and you can see the comparison of 2023 to 2024. There was an increase in administrative fees to offset the increase in rebates that are expected to be received by the City of Titusville. The base ASO fee was increased by $9.43 per employee per month. There was a pharmacy administrative fee of $5 per employee per month added, and then the additional $70,000 in wellness funds. But it's important to note, this I thought was interesting to call out, that even in 2018, your ASO fee prior to the RFP with Etna was $39.63. So, I'm still seeing some savings off of that RFP, but we are creeping back up there with the removal of, or with adding the 100% pass-through on the rebates. On the right-hand side are additional fees that are paid via claims. I believe there was a question regarding, you know, the percent of shared savings, so that's just providing you some information at annual dollar amounts about, around what those might be. On the next slide, this is just kind of showing high level, again, continuous evaluation of Etna. We conduct annual reviews each February on the medical and pharmacy. We just went through that, that annual review and have that reporting, if requested, to share. EAP, those annual reports are also shared electronically every year and host a meeting virtually with the City of Titusville and Etna to review utilization. And then dental, because the change went into effect 10/1/23, and your deductibles and your annual limits are on a calendar year basis, the first-year report won't be available until April, so then we'll see that first-year report. And then in summary, your actionable opportunities here would be requesting a revised EAP renewal proposal, or consider evaluating other, you know, options in the marketplace. If that's something for the EAP that is up for renewal, the contract is set to end November 30th of this year. My next recommendation would be to negotiate the ASO renewal, both the medical and pharmacy. That's up for renewal 10/1/25. You do have contract renewal periods, so you have the contract available to renew through 2027, but this is the opportunity to renegotiate the renewal fees and discounts on the pharmacy side. And then last, I would consider conducting a pharmacy claims audit with all of the changes happening in the health, in the pharmacy landscape, as well as just making sure Etna is providing those guarantees. That would be my recommendation to do a comprehensive pharmacy claims audit. So I know that was a lot of information, and I may have talked fast, so I'm happy to answer some questions from the council members.
Member Nelson?
So, I'm not an insurance person. The Work-Life Services is what?
That includes, let me see, that includes something more of services outside of just counseling, so it would be other services like, I want to say, telephonic-type services, app services, just more additional services. They were added during COVID to help kind of expand access to mental health care, but it hasn't really seen an uptick, so it's more bolt-on services. It's not, it's outside of the standard EAP offering. That's typically, you know, counseling services for members and their families. The other services like, you know, referrals, supervisor referrals, mandatory referrals, that's all included in that base EAP fee versus the Work-Life Services is really just additional supplemental resources for employees and their families.
So, I saw in there you're suggesting maybe removing it?
Yes.
Okay. Why?
Because it hasn't seen utilization.
Okay.
So people aren't using it, and you're paying for it.
That'd be a good reason to renegotiate. Okay.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And council members, have any other questions? All right, well, I'll go then. I appreciate you being here. I think this was very informative in terms of, you know, how we need to move forward for our city and for our employees. I think we're a service industry. We don't make widgets. We have people that do, that provide a service, and tracking retaining them is critical, and at the same time, you know, budget priorities are budget priorities. So, you mentioned at the beginning, and the RFP process, when Bush Robinson, now One Digital, was awarded the RFP for consulting services. Can you explain how much that contract is for?
That contract is on a project basis, so we're engaged as needed. We do, we'll do a proposal based on, you know, the scope of work assigned. So for a Medicare RFP, I believe it was, I believe off the top of my head, around $30,000 for, to facilitate and do the analysis and all of that. That was the most recent RFP we were engaged for. Other than that, we are engaged on an hourly basis, so, you know, charging by the hour. Again, I believe, and I don't have the contract right in front of me, but I believe our hourly rate is around $200, so it is fairly competitive. And so that's kind of been our, our contract, has really been project basis and then engaged at an hourly rate.
And then, are you guys listed as the agent of record for these carriers?
We do not accept any commissions on these products.
I'm just curious, because, you know, sometimes that does happen.
Yep.
You know, people are getting comped.
Yep. No, that's not something that's in the contract.
All right. So in terms of you guys' scope of work, is it just RFP and when the city needs help, or you guys provide ongoing consulting to the overall plan and the overall strategy of, to how make our health plan better?
Primarily engaged as needed, but, you know, we are involved annually during the annual review time, so we will participate in the Etna annual review for the health plan. plan, and then ongoing, we also provide ACA reporting services, so then I'm tracking and doing the ACA reporting every year, but really, it's as needed at the request of the city.
Okay, and I have a question I tend to ask of everybody, is, you know, what has been put in place to reduce the frequency and severity of claims to the health plan?
What has been put in place? Let's say, I mean, the move to Aetna and having the, the employees are very happy with the plan, we've seen significant improvements in health outcomes, that's included in that latest reporting. There have been, utilization management has been put in place, there's that enhanced clinical management in those fees outlined on Slide 11, the enhanced clinical review programs, they are an additional fee, however, they can help save and offset additional costs by providing that additional clinical review, such as, you know, verifying medical necessity, completing prior authorizations, it's an extra layer of review, so that's been added. In terms of severity, there's other things that we're looking at for this next renewal is the Prudin RX program, it's something that will help manage specialty costs, it's something that we evaluated prior to Senate Bill 1550, but it was no longer an option for that last renewal, so it's a recommendation to add that into help specialty costs. So, those are just a couple off the top of my head. And then, you know, and case management, care management, Aetna does have those included in their, in their scope of work for the city, and they have different levels of case management, and I believe the city has one of the most, one of the higher tiers of case management.
Thank you for that information, and I believe towards the end, the suggestion was to have an audit.
Yes.
Of the pharmacy claims. Why wasn't that not standard practice before?
It was, again, something that wasn't necessarily requested, but we're seeing a higher uptick in pharmacy audits just in more recent years, given all of the transparency and uncovering of a lot of things, so it's, I mean, I think it's a time to do it.
And do you, do you think Aetna's been fully transparent with the rebates?
That's a loaded question. Now, I think they're being more transparent as required by law. Previously, there were rebates that were retained, and they provided minimum rebate guarantees, saying that they will provide these at minimum, but there were fees being retained, as we saw, they had to increase their administrative fees in order to help offset the rebates that they'll no longer be retaining.
Yeah, and I'm really concerned about the IPPs and the MAFs in terms of the fees, and I know the Senate bill is trying to curb that, but, I mean, again, I'm trying to put mechanisms in place to.
Absolutely.
Prevent this big company basically from taking all of our money, because what people don't understand is that rebate is not Aetna's money, it's the city's money that we overpaid. And I think that's very important for the folks in the audience and council members to understand, is we are overpaying for these type of services. If you were to ballpark, how much do you think were the total rebates last year, and we only got about $400,000?
Yeah, I over, probably closer to their $526,000, I would say, is what they estimated, so about $100,000 that they retained.
I provided a slide to council beforehand, and I'll enter it in the record afterwards, but the benchmark CVS Caremark rebate rate, rebate rates per tier broken down versus Aetna's 2021 rebate guarantees to the city, and they provided us approximately a rebate of about $400,000, while the market value was about almost $1 million. So, I think we're very off in that, and that is very concerning to me, because pharmacy's just one way, they kind of move money around and keep it for themselves, and I'm also concerned about the transaction fees that are implemented, I think that was going to $5 now?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're going to say, oh, we can't give you any rebates because of this bill, they're still going to try to keep as much money of ours as they can, but they're also going to charge another fee every time something moves around, so what can we do?
I think, again, doing the pharmacy claims audit, holding them to those guarantees that they have in the contract, they do provide guarantees on rebates. We have the ability to do an onsite rebate audit in addition to a comprehensive pharmacy audit, so that would be going onsite to Aetna and looking at their rebate contracts and doing an onsite verification for just rebates. That is something that is newer to, I guess, the One Digital scope, as we've acquired a pharmacy consulting practice that can do those onsite audits, and so that would be one recommendation I'd have there. Looking at the pharmacy admin fee, that, administrative fees are a small portion of the pie, and $5, and even combined with the $9.43, is pretty in line with what I've seen for these Senate Bill 1550 and 100% pass-through arrangements. So, that, yes, it is an added fee, still lower, at least on the medical ASO side, than what you had with Cigna in 2018, and then the $5 is pretty industry standard from what I've seen, so.
So, how much has our pharmacy spend gone up since 2019?
Pharmacy spend has increased significantly, especially in the most recent time period. It is in the double digits, and that is because of the GLP-1 utilization. Currently, there, there could be more safeguards in place to help contain costs, and so Aetna is going to be implementing those safeguards to prevent that overutilization, so the GLP-1s, and we're seeing that everywhere, it's not just the City of Titusville. So, GLP-1 utilization, those are the weight loss, the diabetes medications, those are really driving your pharmacy spend right now.
And folks with diabetes, it's not always them, but yes. And those are typically in the specialty drug range, which, you know, and some of the rebates are exceedingly much higher, which I feel like we have not captured as a city. And in terms of the health plan, what was our claims budget for the last year?
Claims budget for the last year?
And were we over or under our budgeted claims?
It was over budget, again.
By how much?
Primarily, let's see. By approximately $560,000.
Okay, and then how much were we over in our pharmacy budget?
That is for total health plan spend, medical and pharmacy combined.
And that's a challenge, right, is taking care of our employees, but managing our health plan and our dollars appropriately, and I feel like oftentimes, some of these bigger companies just move money around and they're taking a lot of ours. Has Bush Robinson and the city explored an independent PBM or an independent ASO?
That's definitely something we can explore, since being in the contract with Aetna, that's not been something at a request, but it's, it's something that we're familiar with, and we are recommending to clients.
So, who made the recommendation to sign a three-year contract that automatically renewed for seven years?
That was part of the, when we went through the process of developing the RFP, we did have to go through several processes, working with the purchasing department, so it was determined at the time, the purchasing department determined that, that term of the contract.
Okay. And do you know how much over budget the county is on their claims?
The Brevard County government? They, oof, off the top of my head, they actually had a better-than-expected year, I am the benefits consultant for the county as well, so they had a better-than-expected year, but they have increased their funding significantly from the board, so that has helped. Their medical claims trend is under, under national trend, their pharmacy trend is what's driving, but we have implemented different safeguards, we are currently doing a pharmacy audit for them as well, and considering a PBM RFP.
Yeah, the last information I saw is they were $3 million over budget on their medical claims, so that is alarming to me when I see the trend, and yes, we are growing, but I think it's very important that we, as a board, get a handle on this, especially as we go into our budget season, so I really appreciate you coming in and answering these questions for, for us. City Council, do you guys have any other questions? Sarah's thinking.
Yeah, this is, this is definitely not my wheelhouse, but even Andrew throwing out these terms, or the mayor throwing out these terms, PBM, AO, I guess he's bringing these up, and I'm, my question would be, why were these not explored before? Because I feel like when you hire a consultant, at least from my perspective, when we hire a consultant, that's the expert trying to get us the best deal, when I don't know these terms, so I guess why, why haven't they been explored, and are there things that we can do to make sure we get the best rate for the city?
I mean, I would love to be engaged more. I, previously, I did have another consultant, that was the primary consultant on this account, she just retired at the end of the year, so speaking to her experience, I'm not exactly sure why some of these weren't explored, but I know that things have been running well, employees are hap, in terms of, the employees are happy with the plan, there haven't been, there hasn't been the need to increase if there's employee premiums or employer premiums over the years, that could be an issue here, is a funding issue. You do offer two free employee plans, so if there was additional revenue coming into the plan, that could help offset some of the increases in claims expense. Medical and pharmacy claims overall are increasing, that's, that's just a fact, so having increased funding is something that's needed, but we try to offset that by having these cost-containment measures in place.
Can I continue?
Yes.
And then, two more questions, I guess, one would be, is, as the mayor brought up, is that normal for like a three-year contract with auto renewals happening?
I have seen that in public sector, yes, I would, it's pretty common to be in a 10-year contract.
And I, I see some benefit to that in regards to, if you're saying our employees are happy, you know, you don't want to have a plan, find your doctors, and then the next year it changes, and you have to go figure out what you're going to do, and then you, it keeps changing, I feel like that could be a little bit frustrating, potentially, I, again, I don't know, depending on who would be awarded the contract. And then, my question is for the mayor, on this chart that you gave us with the benchmarking?
Yeah.
What is CVS Caremark compared to Aetna, like, is that a, would that be independent of the overall contract, or would this be, we would have Aetna as primary insurance, but we'd have something different for prescriptions?
That was just an example of rebate guarantees from another contract with a similar-size client.
Would that be a different contract?
So, it was just an example of another option.
I mean, could we have two separate contracts, one for health insurance and one for prescriptions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, when you look at the essential forms of health insurance, there's four components, you got the benefit administrator, so Cigna in this case, you also have the network, which is also in this case Cigna, you also have the pharmacy benefit manager, which is also this case Cigna, and then you have a stop-loss carrier, so you have insurance on your insurance.
Okay, so three, all three are Cigna, is what you're telling me?
Did I miss any of those?
For?
The components of health insurance?
Yes, no, that's good, yep.
Okay, so we don't have to use the same.
No.
Person for all, okay, yep, all right, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
City manager?
Onto 6A, which is the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. The Code Enforcement Special Magistrate Semiannual Report is included in the agenda packet, no actions required.
Thank you, city manager.
Next item is 6B, which is the Student Advisory Council Membership Appointment. And council's requested to confirm Mr. Kayden Ramos, Academic Community Enrichment 11th Grade Representative, as a member of the 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council.
Is Mr. Ramos here? All righty, any cards on this matter? Can I have a motion? Oh, sorry, Member Moscoso.
Yeah, sorry, I moved to confirm Mr. Kayden Ramos as the 11th Grade Representative from ACE to the 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Item 6C, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Consider the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to change Policy 1.9.1 of the future land-use element to embrace determining factors, including functionality of roads to qualify, make it a collector or a arterial road determination.
Thank you, city manager, city clerk?
Yes, sir, first card is Dan Johnston.
Wait, mayor, can I clarify, how many cards do we have?
They're sticking, I'm sorry, six, seven.
Okay, clearly, that's a lot, and I guess before we.
About 11 or 12.
Before we called cards, I'm just not interested in pursuing this recommendation at this time, I think we have other things, so I don't know if that will help with comments, but at least for me personally.
Are you, Member Stokel, are you making a motion to table this item?
Not table, I, I mean, I just, I'm not, it says, consider the recommendation to change, I don't want to consider it at this time, so that's nice to know, but I just think there's other things that we have to do, and I'm not interested in this.
Thank you, Member Stokel, Member Nelson?
I am interested in considering it, because I would like to see, you know, I think sometimes we have roads that need to, we need to consider the functionality of that road in making our decisions, and by having something that Planning and Zone, or the planning department is looking at one way, and if you look at it in strict interpretation, then you could consider it another way, so I like, I like the idea of having some clarification.
That's a fair point, I just, I feel like with our comp plan currently, I feel comfortable enough to make the determination and interpret the comp plan as it stands, so that's just my opinion at the time.
Okay. Thank you, Member Stokel, and Member Nelson, Member Moscoso.
I would agree with Member Stokel, I think, you know, our comp plan, we put a lot of thought into it, and this will have major ramifications, and so I think right now there's, there are other things I think we should be looking at.
Well, do you guys want me to call the cards, or is somebody going to motion to either table or vote it down?
I, if, I guess, to put it out there, if there's another person that maybe feels the same way as Member Moscoso and I, we could potentially save some time tonight, but I guess, I, I don't know if other council members need to hear all the cards before making their decision, but.
I recommend anyone who wants to speak, be given the opportunity to speak before you vote.
Oh, yeah, always, but I just wanted to see where council wanted to go, and this is to consider a recommendation, I don't see the actual language in the comp plan in our packet, do we have that?
Correct, there's, I don't think there's, nothing was included, I do have the policy, if you'd like me to read it.
No, I, I understand what the initial policy said, but what the changes to the policy would be, so I think with that being said, like, I would rather see them present a policy change to us.
I think that's what I'm getting at, we have nothing to even discuss at this point, and so it's up to us whether or not we want to advise staff to kind of bring something back, and I, I don't want to spend time doing that when we have a lot of other things that we're facing.
Yeah, it'd be my recommendation to send it back to Planning and Zoning and the staff, and let them work on it, and if they have a policy change they want to make, they send it back up, but I'll wait for Member Stokel.
Yeah, so I guess that would be my recommendation, if Planning and Zoning has specific language that they would like to bring back to us to consider advisability, that can come back on the agenda, but as it stands right now, I, I do not want to consider this.
Second. I have a motion.
I would, again, I would ask if they're cards before you take action.
I'm going to call the cards, I was just going through, I have a motion and I have a second, and I'll ask the city clerk to call each card, and then the people can say if they want to come up and talk.
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, and I've been around in this community for, I don't know, 55 years or so, and I've worked with a number of projects, and I've done a number of projects, but one thing I look forward to is something that a lot of people don't like, and that is called fair play. And there's, there's something in a book that says, do unto others as you would have done unto you, and so, when, and when a government makes a decision on a project, and. and, uh, that project is, is based, the decision is based upon the current regulations, and people are making a decision on current regulations, and then when you go back and change the regulations, so that, that the, so that particular project can be developed in, in a way differently than what it was approved, proved as, I have a problem with that. I don't know if you understand that. Does anybody understand what I'm talking about? I think you do. So, so I'm having, uh, uh, problems, let's say, uh, accepting, uh, some, uh, I don't want to call it hanky panky, but I call it some, some things like, uh, let's, let's, let's do this fair. So that's what I'm looking for is, uh, is to, let's do something fair for the public. And, uh, and, and being here in the town for over fifty years, I've seen some, some finagling that is horribly unfair to the public, and again, and again, and again. So, um, I'm asking you to look for a sense of fairness in the decisions that you make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
Connie Milton.
Yeah, if you could pass those out. Connie Milton, Brevard County. Uh, I have lived here in Titusville since nineteen sixty-four. Um, I moved here as a child. Worked for NASA. I'm an electrical engineer, retired from NASA after thirty-two years. I have five houses in the city of Titusville. I have a couple in Brevard County, but I have houses within the city limits of, of Titusville. Um, I agree that this should be canceled. This Policy 1.9.1 should not be revised. Uh, there's a reason behind that language, several reasons behind that language. Um, what brought it up at the P and Z was, uh, an existing piece of property that zoned commercial, high-intensity commercial. The use is actually high-density multifamily residential. In both cases, that requires the, the, um, property to access onto arterial or collector roads. But that road is a local road. You should not, as a city council, give up your right to review the classification of roads. You should not give that up to be done behind closed doors by anyone. It should come to city council, and if the table for road classifications is to be changed, the city council should be the ones that vote on it. You don't let it be done behind closed doors. There's us in the Titusville that have been here for many, many years that depend on our local roads to be local roads, not to all of a sudden, some developer comes in and wants to rezone a piece of property, and oh, by the way, huh, I want to get an approval behind closed doors, but now I can put my high-density apartment on that and, and utilize that local road. There's a table on, uh, what is required for local roads. It's Table 9.5.2. Your handout has this, uh, exhibit in it. Arterial roads have to have a hundred and twenty feet wide. Collector roads have to be ninety feet wide. Local roads, local streets are only fifty feet wide. So the majority of roads in Titusville that are local are only fifty, maybe fifty-five feet wide. They will not meet the criteria for collector or arterial roads. So you can greatly impact, negatively impact us in Titusville that own homes that, that now all of a sudden, a five-hundred-unit apartment complex is now utilizing that road. So please do not give your right up as city council members and, and the mayor to vote on that. Don't give it up to be approved behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Kristin Boland.
Hello. Um, I just want to say that I support, uh, Member Stokel's motion, and I believe the city should maintain Policy 1.9.1 as written. Short and sweet.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Lindsay Grizzle.
Good evening. My name's Lindsay Grizzle. Um, so here's the, the deal. This decision is going to make a major impact across the city. Um, and there's not even really that many people besides the people that happen to read the, or listen to the agenda items being discussed on Facebook last night and just communicating. So it's not even out there that this major decision is going to impact, right now, commercial, so 1.9.1. Um, but then it was also said, reading back or looking back at the, um, YouTube videos of the city, the Planning and Zoning, um, it was also mentioned, the high-density residential, um, wrote, or, uh, developments at, as well. So, um, you know, any modifications to this policy for high-density commercial access, um, which is really, what we're talking about is the access points. That is the hot topic in the city, um, at least for us in Windover. The high-density residential properties, so the codes naturally will follow, so 1.14.5, because having consistency between those policies is important for the city, I'm assuming. So as soon as we change the high-density regulations for, um, the road classification or the access points, then the other things will follow. And so people that, this impacts on a residential, um, level are not even, it's, the precedent's going to be set. And then as soon as you are, let's say, we leave it up to the, um, the functionality of a segment of that particular road, that automatically sets the precedence for other high-impact developments on that road. Um, if you, if it's, if the, if we're not protected by a sort of classification of that road, um, governing that, that role. So we, um, agree with Mr. Stokel that, um, or Dr. Stokel, that it should stay as is. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Before you go, I forgot to, uh, get your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Um, it's Lindsay Grizzle, twenty-six zero five Gator Trail.
Thank you very much. We're used to seeing the same, same folks, so I don't usually ask every single time, so I apologize. City Clerk?
Sandra Klinger.
Sandra Klinger, twenty-six eighty Bobcat Trail. Um, I also just want to say I support the motion, and I support the existing policy and the underlying roadway classifications and definitions that exist. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Ron Ball.
Hello. Um, Ron Ball, sixty-five thirty-five Windover Way. The comp plan now describes requirements for an arterial collector road. The proposed change calls for the very vague embracing determining factors, including functionality, as to whether to make it an arterial or a collector road. At the Planning and Zoning meeting, I got the impression it was a poorly defined, can the road handle it? Well, there's a lot more to a collector arterial road than just, can it handle it? There's things like turn lanes, medians, et cetera, and it's just not capacity. So to leave the decision as to whether a road qualifies to the Planning Department on a case-by-case basis behind closed doors is just asking for unfairness, trouble, inconsistency. Thank you. Roads should be designated as arterial collector as they are now, and, um, maybe other roads need to be looked at and possibly added to the list. But don't just throw out everything that's been working, is a good product, and just throw it out completely and say, we're not going to check it at all. We're just going to leave it up to the Planning Department.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Brandon Hollis. Brandon Hollis? Abby Hollis?
Good evening. I'm Abby Hollis, twenty-eight seventy-seven Morning Dove Way. Um, I am in support of Ms. Stokel, um, needing more details. Um, I am in support of not changing Policy 1.9.1 as a blanket. Um, I think every road should be looked at individually. Um, there's a lot of things to consider, so I feel like that should be a case-by-case, um, and not just a blanket change that can be made without you guys looking at all of the details. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Kathleen O'Rourke.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. Um, the proposal from the P and Z to me is incredibly disturbing. Changing that, not, 1.9.1 of the future land use element makes it easier to change a local road to a collector or an arterial road by determination. This policy only benefits developers and special interests, and it removes the limited protection that citizens currently have. I'm going to skip some of this, but I do want to mention that I know that many of you were, as, as many of us were, appalled at the treatment the citizens received at the Board of Adjustments. And were not even given the opportunity to present our case. And the actions of this board show how tenuous the protections of the citizens are. And it's frightening to see something like this potentially take them even more. This recommendation from the P and Z can, as I said, only benefit developers and special interests. It's so clearly against the benefit of the citizens who you represent. And your vote tonight, actually, to me, which I guess we're not probably going to have, so I feel a little better about it, because it would show what side of the fence you're on. Are you here to support the developers, or are you here to support the citizens? Um, I appreciate very much, Mr. Dr. Stokel, your, um, recommendation, your comments. And I feel like, Jolynn, that you, you were saying you want to know more, and I understand where you're coming from. So I don't want you to think I'm accusing you of anything at this moment. Um, I saved that for the mayor. Um, at any rate, um, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Well, you know, they say they got, you gotta have thick skin to be in politics, and I definitely do, and it's right around the midsection. So thank you, Dr. O'Rourke. Member Moscoso, did you have something?
I do. I just want to make sure, um, that people understand the ramifications, and I think a lot of people do, but, um, so the definition of a local road, um, according to our, um, code, is, our tech manual, is local roads are all other roads not classified as an arterial or a collector road. Now, I'm going to list off, if you'd just give me a second, a local road, I mean, the arterial roads, Interstate ninety-five, Beachline, Cheney, Garden, South Street, US one, Max Brewer, Grissom, Hopkins Avenue, collector roads, um, uh, State Road four oh six to Garden Street, Barna Avenue, Carpenter, Country Club, Dairy, DeLeon, Fox Lake, Harrison, Knox McCray, Old Dixie Highway, Park Avenue, Sisson, Holden, Parish, and Singleton. Now, if you do not live on those roads, you live on a local road. I'm going to think that most of us up here, maybe not Jolynn, live on a local road. So this will impact you. And so it is very important that, um, we, we look at this, because I, I have been in the courtroom where I have seen our city attorney try to justify a local road being used as something else, and there's a different interpretation. And so I think we have to be extremely careful as we go through this, because we're already seeing cases come up where things have been administratively approved that have violated our comprehensive plan.
Member Nelson?
And, thank you. I wanted you to know that I wasn't suggesting that anything happened behind closed doors. I was saying, it might be better if we had an idea of what factors to consider as we're making decisions. So.
City Manager, point of information on the Agenda Packet, it says, "Consider the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation." And normally when there's a recommendation, either for or against, it shows how they voted. Can you provide that information?
Sure. I, I think what they recommended is that, um, for council to consider advisability, for staff to take a look at that and bring something back to you.
Gotcha. City Clerk?
Claudia Quintero.
Claudia Quintero, seventy-five seventy-five Turkey Point Drive. I just would like to say that I support Representative Stok- uh, Stokel in the, in the motion. Policy 1.9.1 is correct and should remain as written. The policy prevents, protects Titusville residents and subdivisions that rely on Policy 1.9.1 to protect local roads from being swamped with traffic from high intensity developments. That's all.
Thank you. City Clerk?
The last card is Elizabeth Parker.
Elizabeth Parker, thirty-four forty-six Trevino Circle, here in Titusville. Uh, I just want to make a point that Florida Statute's Chapter one sixty-three, Section one sixty-three point three one seven seven demands data-driven amendments. Reclassifying these roads lacks evidence of functionality and can be overturned in an administrative hearing. Uh, that's under Section one sixty-three point three one eight four. As citizens, we deserve the protections that the comprehensive plan provides us, and overriding these plans is not appropriate. For years, we've had the council greenlighting all kinds of overdevelopment in our community. Uh, relabeling roads by function is entirely inadequate and inappropriate. Um, I have the spoon. I can certainly dig a hole. That does not make me an excavator. Like, relabeling the local roads by function, that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to say, a little twenty-two-foot-wide road is now a connector so that you can put eighty-five units at the end of it. This puts our community in peril. High-density developments on these kind of roads add hundreds of trips to the streets. And in this case, it could be where funeral processions are being formed, church communities congregate, kids play, neighbors walk, causing safety and well-being risks to people who already live in these communities. Uh, you know, the Titusville City Council has approved, oh, thirty-five hundred dwelling units, which are currently either underway or about to be underway. Our real estate market is extremely soft. The last thing we need to do is reclassify our roads to build more multiple, you know, family dwellings to further swamp our real estate market and crowd our roads. We don't have the infrastructure, and the law says we have to have the infrastructure before we build these things. This is clearly where this is headed, and it's not acceptable to the people of this community. Uh, please don't weaken our protections and leave the comprehensive plan 1.9.1 alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, so City Clerk, no more further cards? Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All righty. Yay. I know some people are taking off after that. I think it's been two hours and fifteen minutes. You guys want to take a quick recess before we get into petitions and requests, or you guys want to keep trucking along? All right, I'm just asking. All right, petitions and requests, non-agenda items. Mr. Johnson?
Stan Johnson, I'm a professional engineer. I've got to be careful tonight. Why? Because my wife is here. She's not going to raise her hand. So anyhow, but, uh, I'm here, uh, well, and to please distribute that little slip of paper, is that I'm going to talk about eight serious violations of laws that have to do with what this is right here. See that? See that right there? I don't know how many people have seen this. That's me. That's me right there at the bottom of a dam. Dam right in the middle of City Titusville. Very few people know about that, because it's just, it's just not very well seen. So there's a dam. It's got, I'm, I'm going to list to you eight violations of laws, and then I'm going to go over other violations that are God's laws. So among those eight laws, this violates, that strip of paper they just gave you, says, do, it's not allowed, but city, city attorney allows it. Go ahead, allows it. And then there's, uh, uh, another violation is compensatory storage. None of those dams, there's numerous dams, there's four dams between, there's been four dams between Park Avenue and about a quarter-mile Carol Avenue. Four dams. Two of them have just been removed recently. I don't know if they were legally removed. And, and then, uh, uh, it's not there. It's not there. You're supposed to do calculation on compensatory as per City Titusville Code and other places. Uh, and it, uh, number three is, is that, uh, storage as per City Titusville Code and other places. And number three is that it violates drainage laws. Drainage laws have been around for maybe 400 years or so, long before America became an entity, United States of America, because of common law. And another item is, I think maybe number four, is our city stormwater management plan. It violates the stormwater management plan. And number five, it's, there was no application to FEMA for that dam or the other dams. I know of at least five dams in the City Titusville. They're all illegal. Whoa, nobody's listening. I know nobody's listening, because it's been going on too long. One of us has done secretly. Okay, let's go to number six. It violates our Constitution of the United States. You guys, you guys right up here before us, you took an oath of office, and so did I, as a Navy veteran. I took an oath of office to support the Constitution. Constitution says you cannot take property without due process of law. Putting a dam is not due process of law. Okay, number seven and eight is, there's no survey done to show what the boundary survey of the hundred-year flood plain before and after.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I'm asking for more time to express this. You didn't even get to God's laws.
I can give you more time, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, you don't, I know you're not interested. Just go ahead and break the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Wright, 3550 South Washington Avenue. I'm representing my development at 3550 Mixed Zone Project, $220 million project, Mixed Zone. I'm probably the only developer here, and I totally agree with Dr. Stokel's recommendation. No idiot developer is going to go ahead and change the zoning to put something in the local roads. There has to be traffic studies and so on and so forth if they're going to be doing that, and there's no reason for making those changes. I'm also here for the letter that I have produced over a year ago. This is the second time that I'm here, and this was already passed out. I just need the city to let me know whether they're going to send this strong letter to the FDIP, now that Lee Zeldin is the Secretary for FDIP finally, after the idiots are being taken out. So, I'm hoping that we get some kind of consensus in terms of whether the city is going to go along with this letter or something similar to it. My next item, looks like I have enough time. I've met you, Mayor Connors. I couldn't believe that you don't have an office in this city. That's really interesting. I have operated in five other cities, from DeSoto County to Jackson, Mississippi, to Birmingham, Alabama, to Selma, California, to now here, and Nashville, and also Crossville, Tennessee. I can't believe a mayor of a city cannot have an office, that we had to meet in a conference room. The second thing is that the charter for this city, going back in the '60s, well, back then, it was like 10,000 people. Now, you've got almost 60,000. So, it's about time to make that charter change, to at least update it. And I'm coming up for the next city council meeting for the 2.4 million grant, and I'm just preparing you for that event that is coming up. I've divided up the 2.4 into five, and I'll be collecting the checks for $480,000 from each one of you guys on that date. I'm just joking. But realistically, this is the funds that is going to be helping me for the water that is coming off out of 22 acres. So, my cost is about 7.1 million. This city gave Titus Landing about 7 million based on a $67 million project back four, five years ago. So, the runoff, based on 31 acres for the Miracle City Mall versus 22 acres for this project, is very minimal, 1 percent, 2.4 million. And this has been in work for now almost two years.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Connie Milton, Brevard County, and own houses in City of Titusville, all over the place. We have come before city council many times over the last 22 years, and we have put together presentations. 20 years ago, we were able to put a cohesive presentation, took about an hour. We had about 45 or 50 presenters ready to go, three-minute pops, but by putting together a cohesive presentation, it cut way down on the amount of time that y'all had to spend, or the city council at that time had to spend, listening to all the points, points of evidence, because it's quasi-judicial, and even legislative points. Okay? Now, and the last, well, since this city manager has been in place, we have been unable to do that. In fact, some of y'all sat in until 4:15 a.m. one morning, because we were not allowed to put together a cohesive presentation, cut to one-fourth the amount of time that was required to present all of that, because we had to do three-minute pops, three-minute pops, three-minute pops. Okay? So, what I'm requesting for y'all, some of y'all are new, to now say, hey, wait a minute. Why do the developers or the other presenters get to put video up there and the citizens don't? They get to spend 15, 20 minutes, whatever it is, to give you a cohesive discussion of their issues. Why do the citizens not get the same courtesy? So, I'm asking y'all, hey, now's time for change. We can greatly cut down the amount of time that y'all have to spend listening to it if the citizens are allowed to put together a cohesive presentation and say, hey, this block will do away with 40-year, however many cards, because we've put it all together in a 45-minute, 30-minute, maybe an hour presentation. Will any of y'all make an action or motion or whatever it takes to allow that to take place, that change to be taking place? Somebody? Dr. Stokel?
So, you have the remainder of your time. Unless you yield the rest of your time, I won't call on council until your time is up.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, I implore y'all, please. You know, I've come up here representing Windover Farms, 630 homes, over 1,000 people, and we were forced to do three-minute pops. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I think that's something, I don't know how we get there, but that's something I'm interested, as we have. We know we have some big projects coming up. Royal Oak is coming up. There's a lot of big things, so I'm not sure what that would look like or how we do it, or if we are even able to do it, but I'm definitely open to that idea.
Anybody else from council? Member Stokel?
Yes, I'm open to it, too. I think just a couple of things that we would need to consider. I don't think we need to change any policy at this point, but I think that as we know, things are coming up. The one thing we just have to make sure is, if the group is coming up, that that is representative of the whole group and not just part of the group, so we would just need to, of the citizens that are showing up. And then, regarding the presentation, I could see some benefit to that as well. I just think that we would have to get that material in advance to make sure the city could look at it, that there wasn't anything, that they review it prior to. But yes, I'm open to it in the future.
Thank you, Member Stokel. City Attorney, is there any issues with us asking for advisability on, during quasi-judicial matters, having a setup, something like that, as been described?
No, there's no, and it's been done in the past, when you have a group and you ask if they want to designate a spokesperson and grant additional time to the spokesperson. So, as they said, maybe you have 15, 20 minutes for presentation versus 30 people doing three minutes. The trick of that is, you know, making sure, because everyone gets an opportunity to speak, and they may not speak for everybody. So, you'll have a presentation, then individuals that say they didn't speak for me still have their opportunity. But yes, you can create a system where you're going to have a representative of a group and give them additional time, and certainly a process to allow them to provide whatever presentation and whatever format you feel is appropriate. I know sometimes the issue is making sure it's compatible with the system and those kind of things, but whatever council is interested in, we can accomplish.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Nelson?
I sort of like the way Mayor Diesel did it, which is basically, he was like, point one person, that person speaks, and then how many other people want to speak out there? And at that point, he would give you 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever it was. So, it was workable. Yeah.
Per the rules of council, I do not have that authority, but, you know, I appreciate you thinking I can. So, let's, I mean, something for us to definitely discuss, because it does make a lot of sense. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would just add, when the BAA will listen to residents, you do have the option to give your presentation. And there are some regulations, like you have to get it, like a member Stokel was saying, you have to give it a few days in advance, but it is possible to do.
Thank you, Member Moscoso.
I want to clarify one point, video, using the video as well.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's what she was talking about, in terms of getting the presentation and things like that. I appreciate the feedback. Ma'am, I believe you are up. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Christina Michelle, and I would like to omit my name or my address. When you mishandle funding meant to provide resources to an endangered species, what does that mean?
Can I answer? I mean, the species would die off, maybe? Is that the hope? Go ahead.
I wrote this wanting to speak to everyone, but my questions are directly for Member Nelson and Mayor Connors. Thank you. When a bullet enters the body, it pierces skin, slicing nerves, shattering bone, severing tissue, until that bullet is no longer in motion. Firearms are forms of protection, a right not granted to all for quite some time by the founders of the United Snakes of America. But I, as well as you, we know the immense pain associated with power when mishandled and mismanaged. How many bullets does it take to stop a threat? One? Two? Three? Fifteen? Tramari A. Charles was shot fifteen times in the back. Fifteen times in the back. Killed with over 60 shell casings left by a police department with more than 30 unsolved murders.
Are you guys, are you aware of this? Have you guys heard of this? Is this your first time? Is it the first developments of you guys hearing of this? Yes, no? I mean, we are citizens of this community, which is apart from Windover, demographically DeLeon, South Street. Any of those avenues sound familiar? No? Maybe? Probably because when you finance your own campaign, you don't have the reason or actions to put forth for the people.
Thank you very much for your time.
David Riley?
Brother, fighter.
Titusville Department. Titusville Police Department.
Thank you for your time.
I apologize.
Don't worry.
I apologize.
We'll be back. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming.
I'm good. We, the people, we, the people.
Tramari Charles.
We expect justice. We know it's just us.
And NAACP, 10 days? 10 days.
All right. Do you want me to call a recess? All right, we're going to recess. We'll be back once the...
I want a recess. I want...
The order, so if you're not, have the floor, please. Either go out in the hallway or have a seat. Thank you. We have one person with the floor. City Clerk, you go ahead and start the time.
Ready? Okay. I'm Sandra Ozon. I live here in Titusville.
Hey, guys. Guys, somebody has the floor. Take it outside, please. Thank you.
Sandra Ozon. I live in Titusville. I am with a volunteer organization called Keep Bravard Beautiful, and we want to bring to your attention the Park Avenue wall, I'm calling it. It is a, what I understand, a wall that was built by the city, owned by the city, represents the city. It's been around a long time, and as you can see from the photos here, it's what I would consider blight in the city. It's crumbling, it's dirty, it's falling apart. I can't see that it's really benefiting the city in any way. I know that it's been mentioned before, but I would really like to say that we can't cite the city, from what I understand, for code infractions, but this obviously must be a code infraction in this city. So what I would request is that we consider a timeframe to take this wall down or to repair it, if that is beneficial, but then, of course, it has to be maintained. So I think the best thing for us at this point would be to take the wall down and remove this blight from the city. I don't live on Park Avenue. Sounds like a very fancy place, but it is not fancy. It is, it is pretty rundown, and I wouldn't want to have this in front of my house, and I'm sure you wouldn't either. So let's see what we can do, please. Can you give us a timeframe to discuss it, to get it, whoops, to get it considered to be repaired? Because we do care about our city. We want to improve the safety and the appearance of the city, so we will bring in more well-represented people in the community, and I think getting this wall down will be a first step. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you know what that wall is for? Mr. Cook?
No, I could only speculate. It was built with the subdivision that was built there that was annexed into the city from the county. So we can research when it was constructed and by whom. I know some of the residents have painted the wall. It does exist in our right-of-way, so it is technically on public property, but as far as I'm aware, we didn't construct the wall, at least not in the time I've been here. Park Avenue used to previously was a state road in its history, so it was transferred to the city, as was that area was previously developed in the county, transferred into the city as one of the numerous annexations that took place in the '60s, I believe. But we can, we can research anything the council directs.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I've always really wanted to say this, so tear down that wall.
Yes.
I can't, I can't, can't do it very regularly, but, Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would agree. I have spent a lot of time talking about this wall with different individuals. I don't know if we need to research. I think we just need to take it down, and I've offered, I've told Glenn, I'll take my van over there and take it down piece by piece, if I won't get in trouble for that. But I don't know. I feel like, I appreciate you saying we need a time on this. If not, this could come up in a year, and we're still talking about, we need the research. Obviously, the city owns it, and so I don't know if we, if we need to make a motion or what we need to do or direct staff, but I'd rather just go ahead and get this issue solved, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Member Nelson?
My suggestion would be, if it's okay with Mr. Cook, we put the two together and let you guys come up with a plan. Does that, does that work?
I mean, the plan should be just take it down.
Take it down.
Right? I mean, is there's anything stopping us from removing it? I just don't want to go through plan. I don't want to go through research. I just, I mean, it's to the point where my van can fit quite a few bricks, and I'm happy to go out there and do it. There shouldn't be, I mean, I don't feel like this, we need to go through, through so much red tape for this, if I can be honest, unless I'm missing something.
Like, maybe, who owns the wall?
We own the wall, correct?
It's, it's within the right-of-way.
It's on the right-of-way.
Yeah.
But if it's on the right-of-way, we have the right to remove it.
If you grew a tree on the right-of-way, would I have the right to come over and cut it down?
The city, the city definitely would. Look at Kevin. He's saying yes, the city would.
Yeah, in that, in that scenario, yes, we can remove a tree from the right-of-way, yes.
And can we please keep it one at a time? And can we please keep it one at a time? Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yes, I was just going to say, Kevin, do you see any issues with us just taking it down?
Only for the few property owners that have painted and upkept it. I mean, I'd like to give a notice to the property owner if that was reasonable, you know, and then we can schedule if that's reasonable. And then we can always feed back information if any of the property owners have an issue with us removing the entire wall, or if there has to be a section left, then we'll certainly feed that back to the council. But if it's acceptable, we can provide a notice to the property owners along that stretch, just to let them know. And we can certainly come back with a schedule of events for when we can schedule a period.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need a motion to direct staff to do this, or are we all good? We're good? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Kay.
Hello, K St. Orange, Maryland Avenue, Titusville Tree Team. During the recess, I gave the clerk a handout for you entitled Trees and Coonties for Space View Park. I also gave it to the manager and attorney. Mayor Connors recently asked me if the tree team would be willing to plant trees at Space View Park's eastern portion, there between Indian River Avenue and the lagoon. Monday, the mayor, city, and parks and recreation officials, and I met at the park to discuss planting options. A plan was developed to plant eight to 10 live oaks and 11 coonties along a walkway leading to the new pedestrian bridge. The Titusville Tree Team has access to free live oaks, which we've planted a chain of lakes in Sandpoint Park at no expense to the city or county. We would like to volunteer to plant eight to 10 live oaks at Space View Park in June of this year. But the mayor would also like to have 11 coonties planted, 11 three-gallon coonties, mulch and miscellaneous expenses, total $367.50 for this project. At the mayor's suggestion, I would like to ask council to consider appropriating $367.50 for this project to beautify this park leading to the new pedestrian bridge. Any questions that you have for me?
Thank you, Ms. Kay. And a little backstory, she says it's me, but it really isn't. I did a walkthrough of that park with the American Space Museum, and they were upset, kind of like we talked about earlier about the condition of that park. So one of the things they complained about was those triangle cutouts that used to have plants in them, I guess either died or got mowed over or whatever. And so I figured we could try to pick off some low-hanging fruit to make that park look a little nicer. So I asked Ms. Kay to get involved, and she said, I picked the coonties. I don't even know what a coontie is. They had to show me. I'm not a plant person. So again, I just, I asked people that are smarter than me to kind of give advice on what they think would be a good way to go about doing it. So I think, you know, first things first would decide whether we give permission as a council to do this project, and then secondly, the funding. But I just wanted to kind of give you guys the backstory on what had happened. Member Nelson?
Okay, I don't have a big, huge problem with that, but I think it needs to come back as an item on the agenda. And we need to go through, Kevin, I believe, for that. Would that be correct?
Sure, and we'll need to address who maintains it, because the county does maintain the park.
Right.
So the current agreement says that if we purchase and put anything into it, we maintain it.
Okay, so we need to talk to Parks and Rec. Okay. So I would suggest we bring it back on the next agenda or the agenda after. Do we need a motion? Motion to approve advisability for planting trees and coonties for Space View Park.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kay. Sorry, sorry. I figured you wouldn't oppose the trees. All right, name and address for the record, sir, please.
My name is Tramira Charles, and my mother wants to know what happened to me. When can we see the video? I understand what you've all been saying about the FDA lead, this, that. All the surrounding cities doesn't take six to eight weeks to see a video. That's a stalled tactic of this chief that must go. Titusville needs to hire a police chief. The mayor needs to be in charge of the city. When you're getting ready to hire a city manager replacement, it needs to be that the city manager knows that he works for the council. It's the opposite now, because everybody coming in is new. He knows more. That's understandable, but he's still hired by the city council. Single-member districts. Without single-member districts, we don't have a representative. Because most of you have never been on Booker Street, never been on Lucky Street, Short Street, never been in that area. We need representation where, you all know where a single-member district is, I hope. I remember when Brevard County was that large. Gene Roberts would win four and five and lose District One. He says, I don't care what you guys say, because you don't put me in anyhow. We need to be able to vote for someone that lives in that district, which is drawn, the lines are drawn by the courts. CDBG funding. I've asked HUD to give me a list and a total of the amount of money that has come into Titusville to sing them to that target area, and we'll be able to show that that money has not been spent in that target area. You guys don't, most of you don't even know what it is, what CDBG is. I've got over 45 years' experience with it. And this city has been robbing that community by drawing that money and spending it elsewhere in the city. And it will be proved shortly. And I hope somebody go get indicted and go to jail. Because it's ridiculous that you can't see any of the money that's been allocated to that target area. Terry Franklin is a joke. She stood right here to say that.
Thank you, sir.
There it's gone. To God be the glory.
Amen.
Amen, Dwight.
Name and address for the record, please.
South Bailey Port St. John, and your Titusville Police Department knows where I live, because they went outside of their jurisdiction to come to my house in an effort of a fishing expedition. I stand before you today, not just to speak to this council, but to speak to the people of this city, the hard-working men and women who deserve a government that works for them, not against them. For too long, we've watched those in power abuse their authority, officers caught trafficking drugs, using excessive force, violating constitutional rights, and yet, where's the accountability? A police chief illegally interferes in elections? Silence, nothing, not one question about it. A state attorney's office goes after political opponents while real criminals walk free. Citizens are harassed for illegally carrying a firearm. Meanwhile, those who expose government corruption, they're threatened, stalked, and even have law enforcement show up at their homes, even fake accounts made by city affiliates on social media to harass them. This is not just mismanagement, this is a government protecting itself instead of the people. The Constitution guarantees our rights, the right to speak out, the right to bear arms, the right to hold our government accountable. But when leaders start picking and choosing who gets rights and who doesn't, we have a serious problem. This is not about politics, it's about right and wrong, it's about demanding government that protects its people equally, no favoritism, no corruption, no abuse of power. And let's be clear, this corruption continues because leadership allows it. Instead of fixing the problem, they cover it up. Instead of holding bad actors accountable, they let them resign quietly and reward them with new contracts. This isn't leadership, it's complicity. But here's what they don't seem to understand, people see what is happening, people are paying attention. Titusville, you have a choice. Accept this as the status quo or demand better. Stand by while government works for itself, or stand up and make it work for the people again. Because when government stops serving the people, it stops being government, and when corruption goes unchecked, it only grows. And I want to be clear, this is about principle. It's about ensuring that men and women in uniform who do the job with honor aren't dragged down by those who don't. It's about making sure government serves the people, not the other way around.
Anybody else for petitions and requests?
Not girl.
All right, city nun, city manager, we'll move on.
We're on to consent. Council consent tonight is A through J. Are there any questions for staff?
Any, city clerk, any cards on that?
We have three cards.
Okay, sorry.
Any questions of staff?
Sorry, I do have a question, I'm sorry. So with the community survey, I'm really glad that we're moving forward, hopefully moving forward with this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I think that somebody did do a request, that it's not going to be people who have to sign up, and then we're going to send them the survey. The survey flash vote is going to actually have kind of our database of maybe registered voters, I'm not sure, and then they'll send it out. So we'll get a really wide variety of people.
It'll be a collaborative effort. They will send it out with their database, and they're going to ask us to also use our tools that are available to supplement them.
And I think we have to be, I think, I read that it's only open for 48 hours. Is that correct?
So each one of their surveys, that's correct. They feel, and Sarah, I think you've talked to them as well, they have a methodology that they use where they say a survey is about to happen, it's going to happen, and a real survey is going to come your way, and then the survey hits, and then they want feedback within a couple of days, yes.
Okay. Like, I am very excited to use it for our strategic planning, but also for issues, I was just thinking, for fluoridation, for things like that, that I really want to hear back from our residents, so I'm...
Sure, and this is just not for your strategic planning.
This is, because it's like four of them, right?
It'll be four to six of them in a year.
Okay, so I'm very excited about this.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Member Stokel?
Yep, I was just going to add, when I talked to them before, the idea behind it is to have multiple short surveys. So like, citizens can do it, and then I would suspect that staff would work to make sure that we get it to all of our citizens, whether that's, you know, if we mailed it in their water bill, whatever that tactic is. They do have a pretty high participation rate. So I'm very excited to try this. After, those of us that have been on council for a little bit of time, we've tried some other methods, this one seems really exciting, so we can target our efforts and pick those survey topics as we see fit.
Thank you, Member Stokel. I would agree to the shortened timeframe, only because, like, you would think, you know, logically in your brain, that the longer the time you have to do it, the more likely you are to do it, and that's usually not the case. Usually, it's, you know, if you give somebody a deadline, then they're going to do it. And I know I've put off many surveys from my child's school ignoring them, so. City Manager?
Sure. Any other questions of staff? Council, would you like to pull any items A through J for further discussion?
No.
City Clerk, are there...
I don't see any cards.
Yeah. City Clerk, are there any cards?
Three cards.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Sounds good.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the student advisory council scholarships policy expenditures. Consent agenda item 8B, accept the Brevard County Fire and Rescue Emergency Services grant and budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the 2025 Red White and Boom Fourth of July celebration. Consent agenda item 8D, authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with skill bridge training between the Florida Veterans Incorporated and the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8E, accept the Jess Parish Medical Foundation Grant Budget Amendment. Consent agenda item 8F, purchase the replacement of shade structures. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the Harry Timor Neighborhood Services siding replacement. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the State of Florida Department of Transportation near local agreement for creation of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, i.e. Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the community survey to measure local government services. And consent agenda item 8J, approve the easement to Florida Power and Light at 101 Singleton Avenue.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Stan Johnston, I'm a, I'm not just a registered professional engineer for 46 years, I've been a licenser there for over 40 years. Hello? Anybody home? And this, I've got a card for three issues. One of them is 8H, approve easement to Florida Power and Light at 101 North Singleton Avenue. How in the world can you possibly do that? How can you possibly want to put an easement for overhead electric? Why would you want to do that? I can't understand it. I'm a surveyor and an engineer, why would you do it? Why am I saying this? Because August the 6th, 2021, I went ahead and did a, like, a topographical survey for the city of Titusville, showing them numerous problems with SNJ Oaks, including an overhead electric, overhead electric over this project, SNJ Oaks, viewed by Mayor Diesel and Vice Mayor, what's his name, Pastor, Pastor Joe. And by God, he sees it out there, and they can't understand why in the world the city doesn't recognize that for a project. Why doesn't the survey recognize it? Why, when I go to the city and say, please recognize it, and they don't do it? Why in the world would the city approve a survey that they know is wrong? Why would the city approve a preliminary plat? Same project, overhead electric, not shown, not shown on the plat, not shown on the survey, not shown on the plans. Right there it is. How can you be so, what you call it, incompetent, negligent? For what, how long has it been? Over three years? How many times have I submitted to the city and council and so forth like that? How many times? Many times. You don't do it. So what are you? Who are you, who the heck are you serving? I think, you know what it might be, is that this particular project is going to the Supreme Court because of a suit against me. Right now, I've got, my attorney's representing me in for a Supreme Court case in the state of Florida. It has to do with your negligence, your stupidity, and what you're doing, trying to do is probably trying to make me look worse, in addition to the $70,000 fraud that you have against me to defame and discredit my profession. So, okay, I want you to go ahead and go ahead and approve this, and I think you ought to go ahead and stop this nonsense on SNJ Oaks. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
K St. Orange.
K St. Orange, Maryland Avenue. Consent agenda 8F, replacement of shade structures. These downtown shade canopies are beautiful, but wow, I didn't realize these replacement shade canopies were this expensive. Weren't their original canopies installed in 2017? So the city can expect to replace these every eight years for over $82,000 and throw the deteriorated canopy in the landfill? Hmm. Consider planting a couple good-sized live oaks in each of these courtyards. These tree canopies will expand every year, providing more benefits as they grow, shading and reducing temperatures in the courtyard, reducing polluted stormwater runoff, and providing a haven for wildlife. The one-gallon live oaks in the Titusville Tree Team planted at Chain of Lakes Park in 2021 were this tall in 2021, now they're eight feet tall. If the city were to plant four 15-gallon live oaks at an expense of maybe $40 apiece, the trees would soon fill these courtyards with canopy that improves over time instead of deteriorating. Cities across Florida recognize the value of large shade trees... Cities across Florida recognize the value of large shade trees in fostering economic growth, improving real estate values and creating more attractive walkable downtown areas. The Green Works Orlando Initiative aims to increase tree preservation and boost economic development, transforming Orlando into one of the most environmentally friendly in economically and socially vibrant communities in the nation. That's what trees do. But canopies made out of fabric that deteriorate so rapidly and then get thrown in the landfill just don't do it for me. I like trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. City clerk?
Last card is Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. Despite Ms. Micoso's enthusiasm for surveys, I'd like to speak about item, community survey. Why? What for? What are you going to ask? But even more so, Ms. Stokel, what are you going to do with the information when you get it? Let's look back at last year's budget setting. You two weren't here, Mayor and Megan, Megan and Mayor. You weren't here when, I don't know whose idea it was, but we didn't have the community workshop to come in and tell you what the citizens would like to do with the next year's budget. We did a survey. Remember that, Ms. Stokel? It was a survey, but only 83 people answered the survey. And when the results were brought to council, nobody did anything with the information because mostly it was very, very negative. Now, there are other surveys out there that have been done, that are not much is being done with. The Historic Preservation Board did a survey as we did our Joinerville project. We got a lot of information from the community that was here earlier, and we know a lot of the things that happened to them that was pretty bad. Wasn't good news for the city, so I can see why we don't talk about that. But we also got a lot of ideas about things that we wanted to do to bring that community forward. Now, the Historic Preservation Board, we're working with things in the past, and you're wanting to survey, I guess, so that you can do things in the future, right? Isn't that the purpose, maybe, to find out what the people want, so you know which direction to go in? Well, we've got lots of ideas, and we've told you lots of times, there's another survey, oh, that Titusville Vision for Tomorrow by Kim Lee Horn, which I call the nightmare for Tropic Street. Survey is there, too. There were meetings, community meetings, the citizens put input, we gave you ideas, we told you what we'd like to see. Not much is being done with that, although they are going to pave all the streets over there using, oh, Dwight's not here anymore, the CDBG money, which I say to Mr. Cook, my tax dollars go to pay for that, why is that CDBG money going to that? So my question is, I like surveys and I answer them, so I'm all for it, but, you know, six surveys for $13,900, that's cheaper than the surveys we did for the Titusville Vision for Tomorrow. The natural resources, there's a lot of information in there from your community about what we want to see happen. That's been tabled, but that's a good place to start.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. City clerk, any other cards?
All right. Any discussion, Member Nelson?
I do have a question, and then I'll make a motion. We have tree boxes that are going in downtown. Where exactly are those tree boxes going?
They're being installed right now on Indian River Avenue, right by Broad Street.
So not in the courtyard?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I would move to approve consent agenda items A through J.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion of council? Seen none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I know city attorneys double-checking.
As a reminder, we tabled 9A to 27 March 25, and that's SSA 8, 2024, the property located at 1717 Barna Avenue, Royal Oak Manor. So we're on to 10A, which is Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, number 11, 2024, for a property located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard, contains two ordinances, ordinance number 10, 2025, and 11, 2025. The city attorney will read the quasi-additional procedures as well as the two ordinances for the record.
I'm not going to read the procedures at this meeting, since we're not voting, I'll read those at the next meeting, since this is not a public hearing. Ordinance number 10, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation on 3.14 plus-minus acres of land located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard, from low-density residential to commercial high-intensity, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 11, 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on 3.14 plus-minus acres of land located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard, from the single-family medium-density R1B zoning district to the community commercial CC zoning district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
City clerk? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other cards?
Last card is Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. I wasn't going to speak on this one, but because several of the things I was going to speak on got tabled, why not? I went to the P&amp;Z meeting on this one, on the SSA and rezoning of 2960 Columbia Boulevard, as I had studied all of the papers and the environmental report in the agenda packet, and in it, it indicates, the environmental report indicates that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service indicates that much of this 3.14 acres is a potential habitat for endangered species, the snail kite, the Florida scrub jay, the crested caracaras, the wood storks, and the bald eagles. And I just found that, based upon the comprehensive plan's policies that says that we will protect endangered species to the best of our abilities, and I don't have the wording here in front of me, I just thought that the Titusville Environmental Commission should have the opportunity to review this before council has, and P&amp;Z made a decision on it, but, of course, P&amp;Z just makes a recommendation to you. This is a first reading, but still, it's a good opportunity to alert you to this and for you to consider that. The environmental commission's responsibility is to study the impacts of development on the environment, and also the criteria that the city council and P&amp;Z are to consider the impact of your decisions on the environment. So I would ask that you consider that. TEC can delve into this and really help you understand what it is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and its environmental report are saying about these species that are listed as being possibly jeopardized by this development. So there also is, half of the land is considered wetland, and is part of an existing wetland that extends into the Cathedral Heights. So there's just multiple red flags that popped up and waved at me when I was reading this, and so I know my hand's not red, but I'm waving at you and asking that you consider having TEC be able to look at that, because this is their responsibility. And I just don't think P&amp;Z and you can read all your agenda packets so thoroughly enough that you can thoroughly understand, but these birds are heritage, this is why we have had this Wildlife Festival that brings in lots of money, and tourism come here to see these birds, and they're disappearing rapidly. Over a third of them have disappeared in the United States in the last few years. So let's do our part for the birds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Any other cards?
Yes.
All right, thank you. City manager?
We're on to old businesses selection of the city manager search firm. Staff recommends that the city council approve the rankings of the firms that responded to the RFP, executive search and recruiting services, and authorize staff to negotiate the terms and conditions of the contract with the number-one-ranked firm, Colin Basinger and Associates, at a cost not to exceed $34,500. Should the city be unable to negotiate a satisfactory contract with the number-one-ranked firm, staff shall undertake negotiations with the number-two-ranked firm and so forth in accordance with the procurement policy until a contract can be entered into between the city of Titusville and the firm. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute a pertinent agreement, subject to the approval and agreements, terms and conditions by the Human Resources Department Director, City Manager, City Attorney, and approve the associated budget amendments.
Thank you, city manager. City clerk?
I'm Stan Johnston.
So we're discussing the search firm for hiring a city manager.
My name is Stan Johnston, I've been here many years, and I'm very much against what you're doing because of what has, what has happened, and we have chosen the guy from wherever, city manager Scott Larice. I mean, I'm very disappointed, and I sent you an email on this dated February the 17th, and on the email it says, "To Dear Wanda Wells, to have it available for this particular meeting." So I'm just referring to that letter, it talks about in 2019, that there was a $70,000 fraud by city, city claiming that they paid $70,000 for a non-existent report by GeoSynTech Consultants, who city has hired on city sustainability to defame and discredit me. In other words, the report doesn't exist, but the people who were involved in it, this is what has happened.
Mr. Johnson, I'm just asking about what this has to pertain to the RFP.
Very much, it says you shouldn't do it this way, the way that you're planning. In other words, right now, it's saying that city manager Scott Larice and city attorney Richard Broome, what they've done is they've been dishonest, they filed a false report, and they've done fraud, big time, $70,000 fraud. These two guys right here, plus some council members and Walt Johnson. $70,000 fraud, and you got him up to, I don't know, over $200,000 a year, and I can't understand why he's rated why he is, because you guys should listen, read ORB 8506, page 1374, that describes the $70,000 fraud by these guys right here. The guy who goes to church, my same church do, and Mr. Larice, I don't know wherever he's ever been, and he says he was hired because, hire me because I believe in the golden rule. Oh, you got to be kidding. He's a liar and a cheat and a crook, okay? And I think we would have been much better if we've selected somebody locally, locally, like Mr. Cunningham, Michael Cunningham, he's a great guy. Mayor, what's his name, Tully? He's a smart guy, too. I think we should, we should look internally instead of going out of the way, and we got somebody who was completely crooked. I got, I had police officers come to my house because of him. They said, they gave me an arrest, a trespassing warrant, saying that I've been to his house, do not come back again. I've never been to his house, don't even know where he lives. That's what was delivered to me by the Titusville Police Department, from his signature on a false and dishonest trespass warning, not to trespass his house. It never went through the judge, never went through anything like that, they just gave it to me. It's completely illegal and ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
That's what you got, thank you.
City clerk?
The last card is Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. The last time this came up, I came in here and I had eight suggestions of places where citizens could have input in the search for a new city manager. Absolutely, none of it has been dealt with. I'm going to go over it again, and I'm going to go quickly, because I found that in reading the, over the thing, in defining the search, there is no public engagement outlined, but there's an additional caveat on page 450 of 910, 910 pages. If the city wishes, we will gladly incorporate meetings with other stakeholders, such as business community, nonprofit organizations, the religious community, and so on. Who are the so-ons? I'm a so-on. To gather their insights, we could also solicit the input of your residents in an online survey, Ms. Stokel. We could help you review the initial candidates with the city council. We could have helped you gather the information on the recruitment profile. What would you like to have? There's a survey for you. What do you want in your city manager? The assessment, facilitate the selection process, we don't need to do that, because the firm that has been chosen, I want to point out, on page 330 of 910 pages, A5 of their presentation, this is the same firm that hired the city manager of Titusville in 2014, and also the same firm that got the county manager for Brevard County in 2009. Both of these guys are retiring this year, I might point out. The next thing, they're going to select six to 10 candidates? Well, I would like to be on part of the people that get to review and simplify that selection down a little bit. Reference and background checks, they want a background check to review the applicant's technical ability, as well as the applicant's ability to effectively interact and communicate with the community and coworkers, both publicly and privately. When is the community going to get to interject their feelings, opinions, and ideas, desires, wants, and needs in this selection? I do like, I read through the whole thing, the finalist selection, you're going to get a chance after a week or so, you're going to receive then the final packet, and they're going to invite people to come, and at the end of day one, later that evening, the council can host a reception for the candidates, and the purpose is to observe how the finalists respond to a social situation, so, because your city manager will, after all, represent your local government in a variety of venues, and I must admit that our city manager, no, I'm going to finish, our city manager did come to a tree planting once, so he does participate in civic activities.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Civic involvement.
Thank you.
Civic involvement.
I'm pretty engaged, Ms. Tony. All right, council members. Member Nelson?
I'll start. I really like Colin Basinger, I hope I'm saying that right. I liked him because they seemed to do a better check of references. I mean, they really seemed to go into it, they seemed to do a better background search than the other two firms. So I did like the idea that they were talking about doing a public meeting that first day when they're here, so that everybody gets to see them. So I like Colin Basinger. That was my thoughts.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I did have a question on the rankings. So as you go down, like I'm looking at Mr. Cook, and he's ranking them 1 through 10, right? Or is it, how does these rankings work? Is he selecting the firm he liked the best? I mean, he has three 1s in his category, but some go to 10. Is 10 the highest? Is 1 the best? Like, I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the cheat sheet. It's at the, right before the service contract, it's a one-page summary of all the things. By the way, if you go to titusville portal civic clerk dot com, you can click on the agenda packet, and it's great, because it, you can click on it, it just has the items in that one agenda, so you don't scroll past. So I'm on page 101 in my book, but, but you see what I'm talking about? Sarah, do you see the matrix I'm talking about?
No, I'm looking, it would help if you had a page number.
I know, I'm not in that, so it's after the two proposals.
So that's going to be way far down.
Kevin's here, he sat on the committee, if you'd like for him to...
Yeah, I was just curious, like, how the rankings went, like, if you're ranking them 1 through 10, right, but you have three 1s.
Yeah, so we had a scoring sheet that ranks the proposal 0 to 100, based on many factors, background of firm, staff experience, price, schedule. So in my case, they did end up with a tie due to the way that I ranked them, but it was ranked 1 through 10 after the scores were turned in. So each person was ranking 1 through 10, those are totaled together to make a final rank for the sheets that were provided to the council. So 1 is the number... So one is the number one ranked firm, 10 would be the, the last ranked firm in this, this case.
Okay, it looks like page 642.
Sorry, guys. Sorry, I couldn't help. Again, my, if you go to the website, it's a little easier than the PDF sometimes. So I appreciate that information, Kevin, because, you know, I believe if they're ranking one out of 100, right? I mean, what are the odds that everybody end up with the same numbers? I mean, even up here, none of us all agree on the same stuff. So I think that you have ones across the board with Colin Basinger. It just seemed a little off to me because you didn't really see any other numbers that, that jived up. And then unfortunately, we couldn't review any of the other proposals. We only saw the, the top two. So I think to Tony's point, I would have very much liked to have seen what the other firms were thinking. And if Colin Basinger is maybe a really great firm and they hire people all over, but, you know, are, as you get a bigger firm, are they giving us the time and attention and detail that we need? Especially because I'm sure that county contract that's probably recently announced will probably pay more, right? And we are in competition with two other municipalities and a county for the same pool of people. So I wanna get a search firm that has our best interest at heart, especially our councils as we move forward with our new vision of Titusville. So with that, I just wanted to let you know how I felt. Member Stokel?
Yes. Not to pick on Kevin and if he felt comfortable, can, or city manager, can you kind of explain what they were ranking? So why they gave them the score, what things they were looking at? Was it price? Was it, what, what were the items, I guess?
Sure. So, and I pulled it up just so that I can remember. So the evaluation criteria dealt with litigation, history of the firm, was ranked at five points, firm's prior experience was 15, staff experience, the, each proposal has a resume of the staff members that represent the firm. Their engagement approach was, was roughly 30 points, the scheduled complete was 15 and the compensation fee was an additional 20. So it was a 100-point scale on those six areas that were looked at. If you look at the respondents, they each categorized their responses with their litigation history, their firms' approach, the price proposal, so forth.
Okay. And to the mayor's point, we only did get to see two, but of those two, I felt like Colin Basinger was way better, in my opinion, just from looking. It looks like the MGT one, they only, I think, had four or five cities in the state of Florida and then it was interesting, when you looked at them, it was all from 2020 on, which to me, I, I'd like to see like history and longevity have, you know, maybe they're not gonna be successful or those city managers will be leaving. So, and several of the cities on the list for Colin, I've recognized, one of which is West Melbourne and I will tell you just from my involvement with what I've done with Space Coast League of Cities and Florida League of Cities, I often ask West Melbourne for ideas because I think I've mentioned it before, they were able to lower taxes, lower their military rate and give their employees a 7% raise, like COLA, which I was like, how did you guys do that? So I'm always trying to, so they, they're doing something great there that I'm always trying to see. And so when I saw them on the list and several other cities of elected officials I know, I feel confident, also knowing that we will be a part of the process, so we will have some say in the engagement and making sure, at the end of the day, they're just assisting us, they don't hire the city manager. So I look at it as who do I feel can best professionally help us in our decision-making to pick the city manager? So I'm perfectly fine with them.
Thank you, Member Stokel. I'm just disappointed because, you know, this is our hire, right? And this is probably one of the most important decisions we'll make up here, so I think selecting the firm that is gonna search the pool of candidates and being able to evaluate all qualified RFP submitters, I think would have been, been valuable, you know? And I'm, again, just speaking for myself, again, I don't really have a dog in the fight of which firm we choose, I just would have liked the opportunity to review them all. So with that being said, I don't have anything else to add. Do you guys have anything else to add? I need a motion.
I would move to approve the rankings of firms responding to RFP SV25P 025LR, Executive Search and Recruiting Services. Authorize the staff to negotiate the terms and conditions of the contract with the number one ranked firm at a cost not to exceed $34,000.
Second. Does that work?
With discussion.
I haven't got through yet.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Member Stokel, I believe you chined in.
Yes, I just want to make sure with staff to negotiate the terms and conditions of the contract, can we make sure when we do sign that we will have the opportunity to allow for citizen engagement as council sees fit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the search firm reach out to you guys to individually?
Okay.
And formulate what you want in your search committee.
Okay. And I think just reading through it, it looked like, if you also look, they, in their 27 years, they only had, I think, one person that didn't wanna use them anymore and then they resigned from some of them because they weren't having that good working relationship. So I think as we talk to them of what we want, as long as we are cordial and respect, I feel, I feel like we'll be fine.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscoso?
I don't know if you could answer this. Would it be any violations if we allowed some of the public to come to some of the meetings with us, like the, the one-on-one meetings, to engage with them more than just, let's have a meeting with everyone here? Would that be any type of violation of, say, I bring Tony with me to meet? Because she, Tony's practically on council. You vote. Mr. Broome, would that be any violation if?
I'm not aware of any legal violation. Wouldn't be a sunshine issue.
I just didn't know if she came to with me and then she goes and talks to another council member, like, hey, you know, Megan's really liking this person.
Well, that's where, would be a problem.
Yeah, and that's what I, I'm just curious if, if that would be a...
Because it can't be a conduit between council members.
Absolutely, yeah.
That, that would.
So that would, okay, yeah.
But I wanted to say, if you're going to authorize the signing of the contract without coming back, you need to clarify that the contract would have to be consistent with the terms that are in the proposal, that that's what you're agreeing to. And if there's things that you wanna make sure that are in that contract that are different than these terms, you need to qualify that now or have the contract come back to you so that we, so staff understands what that contract is to contain.
Thank you, City Attorney. Would anybody like to amend their motion?
So if we authorize the city manager to execute the pertinent agreement, subject to the approval of the agreement terms by HR Director, City Manager, City Attorney and approve the associated budget amendment, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am.
As long as it's understood that the contract that you're authorizing to be signed, is it, are you happy with it based on the terms set forth in his proposal? The out, the outlay in the proposal? So, and if there's not, there's something specific here that you wanna make sure is in that contract, that's, you would wanna state that now, word come back to you.
So I'm happy with it as, as it is now, as long as we make sure there is community engagement in there. So as I work.
Yes, ma'am. It's in there, it's in his proposal.
Yeah.
I just noticed that, and I wanna like undertake one needs assessment, if the city wishes, we will gladly, we will gladly incorporate meetings with other stakeholders, gather insights.
Yeah.
That's as if the city wishes, so I thought, I wanna make sure.
You guys wish.
I wanna make sure council's expressing what you want.
We wished.
Yeah. You do want that.
Change wish to need. City needs them to do that?
I put it in the contract.
Yeah. Agreed.
All right, so I do have a motion as it is and I do have a second. Any further discussion? I believe I already called all the cards on this, right? City Clerk? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Onto new business, item 12A, code enforcement lien reduction request for 195 Roosevelt Street. Staff is recommending the special magistrate's recommendation for a code enforcement lien reduction to be denied in the amount of the daily fine of $13,000, $13,100. This is for the property located at 195 Roosevelt. The magistrate based the findings on the requirement of the city code, section 3171G.
Good evening, everyone. This particular case was a vacant lot. Actually, the city had, had moved it prior to it going, before any of the hearing. It did go to the hearing, a hundred dollars a day fine and it was running from July the 6th until November 11th. In between all of that, it was sold and Mr. Myers had purchased the property. Upon him getting it, it still had additional issues which he took care of very quickly. And this was my first time to get to speak with Mr. Myers was this evening. He did not attend the hearing with the special magistrate and he showed me that he had several other letters that came from various other departments and apparently didn't have our letter. So he missed it for that reason and he is here tonight and wants to have the opportunity to explain the process he's gone through and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, too. Basically, a short version of a long story is I purchased the property. They had, after, a few days after I purchased it and recorded the deed, the magistrate had a hearing on a code violation. I had no privy to it, no one sent me any letters. So I didn't know anything about it. The first letter I got was several months later, which was on, I believe it was August. Like you said, I got a letter that, that said to, to do some work in the property, clean it up. Yes, that would have been September 30th. I did that right away. Still didn't know anything about this, this lien. I've still never had, you know, the running thing. I never had any notification from anybody. So then when I found out about it, which I got a order for the lien in November 15th. So at that time, I contacted the code enforcement and they told me what happened. I said, okay, what do I do? And they said file the paperwork for a reduction. I did that. I didn't know anything about the magistrate, what, when did it go? I, I never got notified again, still no notification of anything. So since then, they had a vehicle parked on the property, took care of that right away because they called me personally and let me know, the inspectors of, went above and beyond. They called me and tell me, okay, there's a problem, those are what, I'll take care of it. So I've done everything that needed to be done on the property, so I'm just asking that. I didn't know anything about any of this. If I would have, it would have been taken care of right away. So that's the reason I'm asking to have it reduced and that's the reason I didn't go to the magistrate, because I didn't know that either. So anything you can do to help me out, you know, either it's, it's in the thousands to either vacate it or at least reduce it to the 100 so I can, you know, pay it, because it's, it just kinda kills the lot with the kinda money on it, so.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Glenn, I have a question for, for you, so, you know, you said you bought the house and then closed on it and then like two days later, the, the fine was imposed, so was the initial hearing from the previous owner?
No, no, sir, actually, we never had contact from the previous owner. We sent him, and we sent everything out certified. And once that, that started and then the quick claim, we don't get notice of that. We have to go with property appraisers website, which was currently there and it didn't even change until like November. And then the lien came due, city attorney's office files the letter with, which he received about, and that's where he found out about it. So somewhere in the deed, there wasn't a title search done, because that would have shown it, shown our lien.
Yeah. So you guys were sending notices to the previous owner?
Yes.
And, you know, oh, sorry, that scared me. I, I think the whole goal of, of these fines is to get people to clean up their property, right? And to punish, but to, you know, motivate in some way. So just kinda speaking for, for myself, I mean, it sounds like you're in a crazy predicament and, you know, I'd be for reducing it minus the city's costs, but vice mayor?
Glenn, my question is, if there's a, if we put a lien against a property, isn't it the responsibility of the realtor to inform the buyer that there is a lien against the property?
Typically, yes, sir. We receive lien searches every day and with those, that's where those recordings are found, either come from title companies or from realtors, but they are all recorded and typically, now, I'm not sure how Mr. Myers acquired that property. If it was a quick claim or however, they don't do the due diligence, then these, these kinda things do happen.
But isn't the realtor responsible for that? The realtor should be responsible for, you know, letting him know what the problem is.
That should have happened somewhere within that transition. Again, that would be something between him and his realtor or however he acquired the property.
The, the problem is the lien was actually filed way after I got the property. This was a, a fine. They didn't, they didn't file a lien until November. That's when I was first notified that there was lien, I had owned the property for quite some time. So it wasn't, there was no lien when I got it.
So all the certified letters that were sent, were sent to the, of the owner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and he didn't find out until they were, you know, trying to put a lien on his house.
Until the, the property changed in the property appraisers office, which changed our records.
Member Nelson?
So that last letter notifying him of the January 13th hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
That was certified, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And who was that sent to?
Apparently, we sent it to the other owner.
Okay, okay.
Just to give you an idea, I've got a February 13th from Titusville to the previous owner of this year, a, a bill. So the still, the paperwork's still messed up.
There's it.
Now, that, that was the, I believe that was.
It was like a, I think it was.
Collection later, I believe. That wasn't from us.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So it would be appropriate to basically have him pay for the cost of recovery of $216.68?
Yes, ma'am, the $216.58. That is a hard cost.
That would be my motion.
I have a motion?
I'll second that.
All right, all right, well, everybody wants to do it all at the same time. It just threw me off, I couldn't keep track. All right, so I have a motion from Member Nelson and I'll, I'll give Member Moscoso the second. Any cards from out there? Anybody wanna say anything? All right. Any further board discussion, Member Stokel? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
That is so greatly appreciated, I can't, I will sleep tonight. I didn't sleep last night, I haven't had any sleep. I sure appreciate it.
Glenn, before you take off, probably about four, six weeks ago now, this council asked for RFP for a data company to help with collecting fees associated with foreclosures. And this company and the technology would also help alleviate situations like this. So I guess my question is, where are we at in the RFP process?
I don't know.
All right. Can you get back to us?
Sure.
All right. City Manager?
Onto Titusville Community Service Award. At the regular city council meeting of February 25th, 2025, Mayor Connors requested the Community Service Award previously known as the Harry R. Lee Titusville Unity Award. We recognize that the board and commission ceremony versus the flag event, Flag Day event hosted by the Flag Memorial Committee. At that meeting, council provided visibility to bring back the item for future meeting and further discussion.
Vice Mayor Cole?
I can speak to this one because I chaired this Community Service Award for three years and I thought it lost some of its emphasis because, not because it was, it was diluted somewhat by Flag Day. I totally agree that this is a prestigious award and it should either be awarded here in council chambers or awarded at our, the awards ceremony that we have. I, I totally agree with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Stokel?
Yes, I'm, agree with Vice Mayor. If we can just move it to the award ceremony that we do for our, all our board members, I think that would be the best.
Member Nelson?
Well, I'd like to do that, but would also like to see us recognize the person here.
Yes.
Also, do both. Yeah. Okay, both, both.
Hold on, hold on. Before a motion's made, let me say a little bit, too. All right. Thank you. Member Moscoso, do you have anything? Okay. So there's a couple of different components in this resolution, one of which is the location, the other thing is... One of which is the location. The other thing is in the resolution, it states that all nominees are invited to that award ceremony. So my recommendation would be like, I don't know, narrow down to like a top five. Because if we're paying for dinner at this thing, maybe we don't invite everybody. Because now that we're going to have a little bit more time to seek nominations from the community, I anticipate we'll probably have more than, you know, five nominations. So it's just something that we also might want to look at tweaking.
No, and Mr. Mayor, I agree with you because even the times that I did it, we really didn't have a lot more, but I still agree with you that we should limit the number that comes to our awards dinner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson?
So the motion is to award the Community Service Award at our awards banquet in the fall and limit it to the winner and the top four, other four. So we have a total of five. Right now, you probably.
And you also mentioned that you want to do it during a council meeting as well?
You didn't let me finish, Sarah.
Yeah, sorry.
And that we also recognize them at a council meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any cards? All right, I'm just looking out to my gallery to see what they think. All right. All right. Any further discussion from council? All right, all those in favor say aye. Oh, oh, it's a resolution. I need to call the roll.
It's a resolution. Not yet. It's not a resolution yet. We'll get it back.
Okay. Oh, city attorney, do I need to call a roll because it's a resolution? Or are you going to bring it back as a new resolution?
It'll have to come back to you in written form as an amended resolution, at which time you'll have a roll call vote. I just wanted to clarify. I heard a comment about the four others.
So in the resolution, it states that all those that are nominated are invited to the award ceremony. Well, if we're having the award ceremony and the city's picking up dinner, right, for our volunteers, we're not going to invite, let's say we have fifty people nominated, we're not going to invite all fifty. We're going to let the committee select the top five to invite to that ceremony, but obviously there's only going to be one winner. Does that make sense?
Sure. I was just looking in the, where it is that they, how many they nominate. And do they nominate the top five or is it they just select? I want to make sure the process.
They can pick who their top five people are and they can invite them and then they'll select, they'll.
Charles, do you want to make sure there are other modifications we need to make about picking top five or so on? But that's your intent.
Yeah, it's our intent.
And we'll come back with an amended resolution for your consideration.
Yes. All right. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, council.
As a reminder, we've tabled item twelve C, the Natural Resources Public Engagement, to twenty-seven March, twenty twenty-five. We are on twelve D, Water Services, Water and Sewer Impact Connection Fees. Staff is recommending that you approve the water and sewer impact fee study and provide direction for implementation as outlined in the presentation. Additionally, provide advisability on implementing the proposed code-related changes and authorize the city attorney to utilize outside counsel, Thomas Cloud pursuant to his retainer agreement with the city as needed to assist with the review of the ordinance.
Right. On that one.
Kevin's here to do a presentation.
On that one, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Cloud has, under an agreement, to provide as-needed recommendations when it comes to rates as an expert in that field. So we're asking just utilize his current contract that allows him to do that to review this and give us some feedback on the ordinance.
Thank you, city attorney.
Just have a brief presentation to go through. So the city contracted with Kemley Horn, who subcontracted with Ray Tillis, who is our, actually the city's rate consultant for water sewer previously. So they provided the impact fee study that's added to the agenda packet. So just going to go through some of the existing and proposed current fees for water sewer, go through how they're calculated, our CIP, they're loaded into these impact fees, current plant capacity and implementation and next steps. So just giving you an idea, we are proposing an increase of about nine point four percent from our current impact fees that were set in twenty twenty. We are also in the ordinance going to propose changing the terminology from impact fee to connection fee. The fire statute has some differentiation between water sewer and connection fees. So we want to try to clean that up as we move this forward. Just to give you an idea, the existing assets are rolled into our impact fees. So you can only count certain assets and mainly any lines smaller than eight inches, our fire hydrants, meters, equipment, so forth, have to be excluded from the cost projections. But this, sorry, this charge gives you a breakdown of the combined system, about two hundred fourteen million in assets. About one hundred thirty-seven million of that is incorporated into the impact fee calculation. The next step was they take our capital improvement plan for the next cycle of five years. Again, they do have to exclude items that are renewal or replacement related because that is not related to growth. And our distribution system is our smaller lines. We can only count our transmission mains and our treatment system improvements. So you see, again, while we have a five-year program around one hundred sixteen million, only about fifteen million of that is being dedicated to what could be included in the expansion of capital. At the snapshot at this time, this was the capacity of the plants. This is not taking into account development reservations. It's simply the average daily load on our water and sewer system. About twenty-six percent on the water supply side. That's not the plant ability to treat. That's the supply of water we can pull out of the ground. And about thirty-eight percent on the wastewater combined between the two plants. The ERU calculation is just based on if we were to run two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day on the water side, two fifty on the sewer. We add capacity to sort of twenty-six thousand homes on the water and thirty-three thousand on the sewer side. And just as a note, at the bottom, I did update these numbers since it was about a year since that twenty twenty-three average daily flow was set. Water supply was at twenty-four point two percent as of last month, wastewater at thirty-four point six. With commitment of current development, about thirteen percent on the supply side of water, wastewater at twenty-seven percent. Next step is just the impact fee calculation. As we walk through the existing facility, plan improvements, we take out any grants that we have available to us, calculate the per gallon charge, which leads to our ERC, which is a typical house fund. This example is water. So the new rate projection would be twenty-one hundred dollars for every new home connecting to the city system. We take that as capacity factors. The meters get larger, there's a larger use of water. So going from a three-quarter inch, which is your normal house, all the way to an eight inch, which would be your larger industrial-sized developments. It ranges from twenty-one hundred to one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars for the meter fee. Go to the sewer side, the same step process. Level of service on the sewer size, two hundred gallons per day per home. That comes out to twenty-four hundred dollars. And again, just stepping through a very similar process where the meter size, as we charge these fees based on your service meter, again, ranging from twenty-four hundred and fifty up to one hundred ninety-six thousand for an eight-inch water meter. So Ray Tillis, obviously, does rates for a lot of different communities. So they decided to give us the comparison of our single-family impact fees. Other impact fees are localized to our system. We do just want to show that we are about mid-pack on water sewer combined. Mainly, these are their clients for rates. So we are a little below, the U C is a little ahead of our county, well behind the communities of Orange County and City of West Melbourne. So our consultant did propose that we implement in two steps. This would be an item that the council can choose to change if we don't want to take these out as steps into fiscal year changes, which would just make it easier for our, kind of goes along with the rest of our rate changes. We did propose a year one step, which is half of the increase, and the year two step, which would be October of twenty-six, would be the full rate implementation. Again, this will be up to the council. There are some statutory spacings that we do have to do, but we can look at, there's a desire to change this spacing. So right now, the next steps we're looking at is go to a first reading at the next meeting on March twenty-seventh and come back with a second reading on April eighth, subject to review with our internal and external counsel attorneys. And then we also have other impact fee adjustments forthcoming. The same study that brought these forth will bring forth the fire, city hall, all of our other matrix of impact fees. City Public Works has an additional impact fee, but this one is water sewer. It was ready and packaged, so we brought it forward now. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I did want to talk about my thoughts on the fees as I believe what councils in the past and what we want to do going forward is to incentivize, you know, a local home to get built. And I think increasing those fees on a single-family dwelling is the opposite of what we want. I think we should either keep those fees the same and then offset that cost with increases to the larger-scale developments. That's how I would personally like to see it done because anytime the government wants to limit its use on something, they tax it or increase fees or things like that. So I want to incentivize a local G C to build a local home. And I think that's what majority of our residents want, right, is local homes being built, not high-rise condos. So if that's the case, then our fee structure needs to support that incentive. With that being said, I will turn it over to Member Moscoso.
Just looking at that chart, you see where West Melbourne is with the impact fees. So it kind of gives us a clue of how they're able to pay for all these things. I do have a question for you, Kevin. And actually, I really appreciate this. I learned a lot from this. I would kind of love to see this in a graphic, especially the ERUs and how much we have, like what capacity we have for new homes. Because often we hear we don't have the capacity, but this study shows that we do, and I think that's important. But with developments that are being built in stages, which impact fee schedule do they follow? So for example, Tranquility, there's still eighteen hundred units that will be built. Are they locked in with our previous impact fees or will they roll over to these new fees?
No, they would go by when they're building permits or starting on application. So if they had a building permit application in today, they would stay with the rates that are in effect today.
Okay.
But come October, if the rates are increased and they hadn't applied for a permit yet, so the later phases would hit the newer impact fees.
Okay. And then I have one more question. Mr. Broom, can you explain once again why we are using Mr. Cloud?
They had approved Mr. Cloud from Gray Robinson to do a contract to help us through rate studies, et cetera. And that's the reason. He is known as a utility expert. He was the attorney for, you know, New Smart Utilities and others.
But didn't we use, I mean, Kemley Horn to do the study? So we already have the rate that we're going to vote on tonight. It's just putting it into.
You're voting on the study. Yeah, he's just going to review it for form, maybe an hour, two hours.
That's something that you are, Chelsea, are not able to do.
I can do it. We recommended, you know, if we want to have him do it, we can do that. He reviewed the rate studies. If council does not want to do that, certainly.
I'm just curious what the cost of that would be because it seems pretty simple if we have the study.
My guess is a couple of hours. I think it's two hundred dollars an hour. That would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
I'm estimating the two hundred. I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's what it is.
Thank you, Member Moscoso.
Certainly, if you don't want to do that way.
Member Stokel?
Yes, I tend to agree with you, Mayor, on, I think that our fee structure should align with what the vision is for our city. So case in point, back when we were in real tough times, we were waiving impact fees, begging everybody to come to us. So I think that we need to take that into consideration because that's where we do have some control over those incentives and what we're doing as far as what we want to see in our city. Mr. Cook, on that, the comparison where we could see like the different rates and where we're moving, that looks like it's only for the single family and how we compare to other cities. Do we have, how we compare to other cities on those other fees?
Assuming they're all scaling by the same capacity factor, which is how it's set up for ours.
Okay.
I would assume this will just scale up with that. The rates are set on the equivalent residential unit, so that's kind of where the single family is, the methodology for comparison.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that goes, and Member Moscoso brought it up. I mean, you say City of West Melbourne is at the very far end. That's how, and I think that's a smart move where they can keep their taxes down low for their citizens and then those that are adding to their expenses for infrastructure. Oh, yeah, that was my other question. What can impact fees go to? Can they go into the general fund or do they have to be used for specific items?
These are water sewer only, so they're used for water and sewer treatment and transmission.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking. So like you have to think when we're adding all these new citizens to you, we also have to increase our police and fire. And so where do those expenses come from as well? And so.
So those impact fees are being studied now and they will come back to you. This one just happened to be ready. Water sewer just happened to be ready.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I don't know. I think for right now, where we are, I tend to lean toward having them a little bit higher. Yeah.
Member Moscoso?
I do think from the study that the fees have to, like you said, have to go into the water and sewer and it has to be collective, a benefit for the collective. We can't just say we want to raise impact fees so that we can fix this over here. Is that correct? So that's kind of what, from my understanding, that's what the study was kind of showing.
Yeah, so there's two factors. One, the existing capacity in the plants can be counted towards the impact fee still. Because the plants, while they were built in the past, there's a value to what's left in them. So new homes are taking that capacity away. Then also they account for in the CIP plan, transmission, distribution, treatment improvements. So what realistically you see with West Melbourne, they built a new water plant. So by building an entire new facility, that counts into your capital plan and they're paying for that. If we come in the next cycle and come back with a new water plant, it's eighty million dollars. We would, at that point, be looking for impact fees to account for that infrastructure growth that's necessary.
I mean, I would love to see more money be put into our osprey. I know you would, too.
Thank you. Any further comments, council? Is there any cards on this item? All right.
No, I'm not sure how or what you want to adjust. I mean, you gave a principle, but I don't know.
Yeah. So I personally would like to see the single-family home meter not change and, you know, increase whatever you think on the bigger meters to help offset it. But that's my opinion. Member Moscoso?
So how do we determine like a local general contractor that's building one or two single-family homes compared to Verona that's building five hundred single-family homes? Do they get, is it the same or how would that work?
Kevin, can you speak to that?
Currently, they would get the same. So the variation would be, we do see some very large homes that come at a one-inch meter. So they're a step up in the scale, but most traditional homes are a three-quarter inch meter. So Verona building a hundred homes, they're paying a hundred impact fees.
I'm talking, sorry, I'm talking more about your idea of not raising that for single-family homes. Because then those general contractors for, you know, we want, you said locals building in the local area, it's also going to be able to apply to these companies coming in, D R Horton, and building homes as well. And so it's going to have to cover everyone. You can't just pick and choose
Right.
which impact fees the single family, like you get to not pay the increase rate and you have to pay the increase rate.
Yes, I understand where your question is. The truth of the matter is, obviously, we can't discriminate. It's a single-family home, it's a single-family home. But I think to the citizen's point is, what I keep hearing, and I'm sure you guys do, is why you guys build an apartment complex is you guys should build homes. So I think that's where the incentive is, is to just not increase the impact fee rate. Because again, we got to focus on what we want to incentivize. So that's why I brought it up as a possible option.
Sorry, can I just respond?
Yes.
I think that I get what you're saying, but single-family doesn't really generate, they don't pay as much as a multifamily development. So we have to keep that in mind, too, that we can kind of incentivize the single-family, but it is going to tax our infrastructure as well.
Member Nelson?
So maybe the idea is to keep the three-quarter inch pipe lower and then as you go up, increase those amounts. Does that make sense?
That's what I suggested.
Okay.
I don't think we'll be able to do that because the ERC is set to three-quarter inch. So the base of the entire structure is on a single-family home. So I think that the option of not raising it would be not to raise the impact fees, would be to stay status quo in the impact fees.
Right. I think the methodology is the methodology. We can't arbitrarily go away from the methodology. It has, or your whole impact fee would be subject to being challenged.
I got it.
You have to provide that evidence in methodology to justify the impact fee.
Got it.
I guess the answer is legally, we can't do it.
No, but we can.
I'm not suggesting you have to increase your impact fees. I'm suggesting it has to be consistent with the methodology if you're going to raise them. I'm suggesting it has to be consistent with the methodology if you're going to raise them.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Member.
But again, the impact fee is for development to pay for itself, that that's the only way.
Member Stokel, did you have anything?
No, I think just given as we're talking through this, I think that the best course is just to approve it as is and then us just to consider other things that we can do moving forward.
Well, and this is only one aspect of multiple impact fees. I was just, you know, thinking about what we're trying to incentivize and how we're trying to move forward as a city and and just bringing that up as uh a either motivator or deterrent, right? So with that being said, uh, can I have a motion?
Let's see if this works. Move to approve the water and sewer impact fee study, amplify direction as stated.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Say clerk, are there any cards on this? Thank you. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Petitions and requests?
You had talked during your discussion about Mr. Cloud being used or not?
Uh, the motion was made and passed unanimously based on how it was.
Yeah, but there was no mention of that.
It was how.
We approved what was mentioned in the report.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Any petitions or requests? Non-agenda items? All right, seeing none? I guess it's me. Go me. Um, Council, I wanted to let you know that there was a mayor's report in your mailbox. I hope you all got it um for whatever reason and sending things back and forth. Uh, the one I meant to have attached to agenda item, uh, the agenda packet was not there. But basically what I did was is what is missing was the recommendations from the council meeting last time was uh I included the boards that I serve on. So that I I make note to mention what was talked about. So I think it's a good practice to get into of going, hey, this is what going on here, uh, what's going on at this meeting? So I remembered to 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 bring it up because if it's not on the report, then, you know, when you're conducting these meetings, sometimes you forget to mention that. So um, obviously you can see my calendar, but I just wanted to bring up the Tourism Development Council meeting. Uh, we had the appointment of Lily Gallo, who is the City of Tidesville Sustainability Planner, to the Beach Renourishment Subcommittee through the Tourism Development Council. And then we also had Amy Matthews, the P I O of the uh the City of Tidesville, appointed to the Marketing Subcommittee of the Tourism Development Council. Both of these appointments were made uh in conjunction uh with their supervisors and staff's approval. Um, I didn't just appoint them, I asked if they would be interested in serving and uh the uh supervisors agreed that they'd be a good fit. Um, Laura Lee was also considered, but she was already uh wanted to be already appointed by Commissioner Felton. So we'll actually have two North River representatives on the Beach Renourishment Committee. So I think that's that's good news for us. Uh, no report from the Zone, no report from Parks and Rec, because we haven't met. And then also the Space Coast T P O meeting is uh on Thursday. And unfortunately, I will be in Tallahassee for Brevard Legislative Action Days. Um, so I will need an alternate alternate member to fill in for me uh on Thursday. And Herman's already a voting member, so um I also included the agenda for Thursday in the packet. So in case you got real excited about some road discussion, you could fill in for me. So is any any takers in uh going to the T P O meeting? Uh, one thirty, one thirty, three thirty?
In Rockledge.
Um, in Rockledge. Um, if you wanted to go for like an hour or so and, you know, then leave if you had to go to your kids, I'm sure that'd be okay. There are some people that do leave early, um, and sometimes they don't go. Um, we just won't have a vote if anything comes, we have two votes. Yeah.
Uh, the mayor and I go.
Yeah.
I thought we had alternate members for that also.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem that I see is I'm at the Boys and Girls.
Could you go on the microphone? Yeah, thanks.
I'm at the Boys and Girls Club on Thursdays.
Yeah, I'm just uh bringing it up because if anything comes to a vote, um, it's based on, you know, the size. So like Palm Bay has three voting members, we have two, um, the Barrier Islands kind of share one. So it it, you know, it's an opportunity to learn and exercise their power. Member Moscoso?
Sure, I'll I'll go to it. I'll probably have to leave early, but I'll.
But in case, you know, they need it for a quorum or, you know, whatever. And quite frankly, with the Legislative Action Days, who knows if, you know, they could be doing a quorum check uh maybe tomorrow, so we'll we'll see. But I appreciate you you uh willing to step up. With that, it concludes my report. Um, the only thing I was, you know, hoping is there is a section on the agenda packets for council reports as well. Um, so, you know, just like you guys want to see what I'm talking about before I bring it up and talk about it. It'd be helpful if you guys uh maybe got in a routine of submitting your reports as well. Um, because, you know, then I think everybody can know what what you want to get accomplished, so we can talk about it. So that's just a suggestion that I would make, but um I think it's a good habit of getting into. But that being said, who would like to go next on council reports? I don't see any lights lighting up. Member Nelson?
Well, since we have new people here and there seems to be a confusion about what the rules are. And the rules are sort of scattered. We have resolutions, we have charter. I think we need to sit down and have Mr. Broom come back with the the rules um in a resolution. And then add what the procedure is if somebody violates and what the sanctions are. Um, because that way it's all in one document, we're all on the same page. And we know, we know what's going on, so that's my suggestion. How do you guys feel?
Thank you, Member Nelson. I don't see any further discussion.
I don't think that's a bad idea to come up with with that, because at least we'll all be singing from the same hymn though.
That's sort of what I'm thinking. I mean, we've got rules and res- regula- resolutions.
Yeah.
Um, talking to the city manager, I wasn't aware of some of the rules. If we have one document, I think it'd be great.
And I think um that's what the rules of council were intended for as an ordinance. And that's why, as you can see, like I reference the rules of council, you know, and make sure that we're running an orderly meeting or whatever that is. But I think that's where all that stuff should be governed. And uh unfortunately, it's, you know, frustrating when you find out that there was a resolution in nineteen ninety-three that I don't even have access to that says you can't do X, Y, Z. So I mean, I think that would be a heck of a research project to go, hey, here are all the rules that have ever been made, maybe strongly suggested. Because like they use language like encouraged, not required. And so like I think, you know, again, clarifying some of that wouldn't be a a bad idea. Um, so, Member Stokel?
Yes, just a point of clarification. So are you meaning rules of council, like during our meetings or our form of government that we have with the city council manager form of government? Or and like what our role is versus what staff's role is? I I don't know.
What our role is versus what's staff's role is.
Okay.
How we're supposed to handle um public engagements, all those kind of things.
Okay.
How we are comporting ourselves not only here, but outside of of council chambers.
Yeah, and I think that will help too when um, I think you remember we went to the F L C, the first one, where they go over the form of government and what our role is too. So, okay, no, I'm fine with that.
So in a sense, it'd be the rules that we are creating to govern each other.
Yeah.
Megan Moscoso, sorry, Councilmember Moscoso.
Yeah, on your um report, I see on February twenty-seventh, there was a visit to NASA. Could you explain a little bit about that?
Yeah, I got uh reached out by uh the folks over there and they said, hey, we feel like we don't have an open-door policy with the City of Tidesville. Would you be interested in coming over? I said, great. Um, I asked the city manager who should attend something like this. And uh we came up with a list and um he approved every single person. He was actually supposed to go and then did not show up the very last minute, didn't tell anybody why I wasn't coming. So the fact that Amy was there, uh, Nick Gower, Economic Development Director, because it was all about economic development. Um, that was all kind of gone through him because I asked him who you think should be there, so.
City manager, I was told a different story from you. Could you
Yeah, I.
Explain what you explain to me.
Anytime staff is used greater than two hours, council has to approve that. I didn't know the nature of the tour, I didn't know, I was asked about a lunch. Um, I I didn't know who was providing it. I I met with the mayor, he said it was a private company that was providing the lunch. So we had to do an ethics check on that. But um I wouldn't approve a council member taking a staff member. I don't have the authority to do that, you do.
There's emails that show everybody was on the email chain and had the itinerary.
Well, my concern is this, because we, Mr. Reese is in charge of staff. And the staff has jobs to do. And so therefore, we should all be able to weigh in and say, if you're over there for more than two hours, we need to know. We need to authorize it. And so to me, that's a problem. But then when I was looking at it, you know, that's in the charter, it's actually in the charter. You have no right to direct any staff member to do anything. So, but then there are other things that are in resolutions that probably haven't been seen in five years. And we need to know what the rules are.
I agree, and I did not direct the staff member, or the staff members to attend. I asked the city manager who he thought should go, and that's the list we came up with. I invited uh Mr. Post from the the Zone, I invited uh Kevin Daughtry, I invited whoever.
Andrew, that's that's playing hairs. Because bottom line is these guys are supposed to be at the city working. So when you turn around and say, I'm inviting you, I I think it's very hard for staff to say no. So in essence, whether you think you're inviting, I think they're looking at it as you directing them. And I think that's, that becomes a problem.
I I think the the bigger problem is is uh this was discussed at length with the city manager. And then after the fact, um, they're trying to create controversy and division uh amongst our uh city council members. Um, and creating this conspiracy or that I'm directing staff, that is not the case. Um, I definitely had the city manager engaged in this, it wasn't me.
Okay.
All right.
Either way, the bottom line is, in these kind of instances, you have to have council's permission, not the city manager's permission. He can, he can say yes all day long, he doesn't have that authority.
He he has the authority to direct staff to do their, do the things.
He does not have the authority to direct staff to do anything for us that is going to take more than two hours. That's the problem. It, but looking at it in the future, I'm sort of like, we need a list.
Mm-hmm.
We need a procedure.
Yep.
And we all need on to be on the same plane.
I agree. And uh I did bring up the economic delegation in my previous reports, uh, letting y'all know what was coming up and what we were doing. Um, so I'm trying to, you know, again, keep everybody a loop. I'm very big on over-communicating and letting people know what's going on. I think the challenge is we can only communicate on what we're doing twice a month. So, you know, I'm doing the best I can to uh let everybody know all the time. And uh unfortunately, when we get to our reports, it's ten o'clock, ten-thirty at night, and we're trying to buzz through them in accordance with time. So I think it'd be behoof of us to look at the rules of council, which in the ordinance, it lays out the agenda and look at the order. So we can kind of get the things that we need to talk about or the things that we want to bring up right before um uh at the beginning of the meeting, so.
So my motion would be that Mr. Broom research it and bring us back the agenda item, um, laying out the rules that we should follow.
There's a lot of rules you should follow.
You're gonna have to.
You you, with regard to relationship to employees
Yes.
representing the city, to the city manager. I I want to find out exactly what, you know, the the one I'm looking at now is currently is the Resolution nineteen twenty-ten. Which is the one that uh lays out process and procedures for review of the mayor and council members' correspondence. And it talks about uh the things you can do without getting council's approval and the things that do require council's approval.
Correct. Richard, all that.
So, right, so if y'all want to look at that in preparation to the next meeting when I come back, is um things you may want to add, take away when we vote. I'm just asking, is there something specific right now you'd like to see added or changed? Or you just want them consolidated
Consolidate them.
document that I can bring to you and then we can decide?
I think they need to be consolidated so that we're not out looking for bits and pieces here, there, wherever. I think we need a procedure. I think we need to know what the sanctions are. Because turning around and saying, um, it's like talking to my child. They're grown, but when I, when they were kids, you know, um, don't lock your sister in the closet again, please. There has to be something behind it.
Don't they have now in the code is when it comes to your stand, your code of conduct, your
Correct.
Based on the ethics, there's a provision in the code, and it talks about a censure. You know, you get censored a council member for that violation, you can include that here as well. But there currently is not that.
Right, but there's also, as far as I see, there's no procedure if somebody violated a rule.
Sure, if you're gonna want to have any kind of anything more or a censure, you'd have to have a process for that.
Right, right.
Almost like a quasi judicial procedure where you present it and chance to defend yourself, and it becomes a process, that's correct. You'd have to have due process if you're going to do that.
So with that motion, is that sufficient?
I'm not sure what you would want in the way of, I mean, to do a censure. I mean, we could censor them if you want to go further than that, but I can bring back what you suggested so far is try and if there's two or three different resolutions that deal with process, we'll have to look at, you know, this is the one that is is the guiding one so far. You know, I would say as far as um your processes, where you do your proclamations. Not directing, like like for instance, the provision about assistance from the city attorney. Opinions only require minor research, uh, but not involving conduct of the other city council members. Advice concerning ordinances with minor research, no more than two man-hours. So in in here, you have some of those provisions. You have the things that council can do, which is routine correspondence, but that do not require council approval. Um, transmitting documents that have already been approved, responding to citizens' questions, forwarding information to citizens. Recognizing citizens, recommending things for students, uh, mayor's proclamations, correspondence, promoting or marketing the city to a third party. Or the kind of things that would not require uh council's approval.
Yeah.
And that's, like I said, that's currently in this resolution. So if there's something council is wanting to see that's not covered, I, you know.
I would like to see it consolidated so that we have maybe a long resolution, but we have it as one document.
I can look at other processes or procedures, maybe another resolutions that would, could be included.
Okay. So at any rate, that's my motion.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Cole. Is there any comments? Any further discussion?
I have a card.
Oh.
Uh, Stan Johnston?
I've been going to a number of council meetings and I'm seeing what some things are doing, going on. But uh we have problems here in the city right now that are, I want to say that it's very different than other uh council that I've been through in the last uh over forty years. And uh I believe that the council members should have some understanding with city manager of who they can talk to and when they can talk to and stuff like that. But not to overrule so much the, and limit the uh council. but not to overrule so much the, and limit the council members to do, to do their due diligence in research and what's going on. In this particular situation is that we have fraud by our city manager, and it's, it's very well, it's very well documented, and you have access to it anytime with him and the city man, him and the Walt Johnson and the city attorney. So, you've got, our city, city manager has never had a meeting with me, although he promised that before he was hired. I came to him, gave him love and so forth, he's gonna want it. So, I've been, what do you call it, stonewalled, closed doors and so forth by what's going on and what he's doing, and the, and as far, I'm not, I'm not pleased with the dishonesty and the corruption that's in the city of Titusville that you guys don't recognize, which is open and notorious. So, something needs to be done. It's bad. I mean, I just came to you today, today and showed you dams that were constructed and eight separate laws that it's violating, including the Constitution, and you guys just let it pass. This is crazy. This is crazy. I was put in jail, I was falsely arrested. Nonsense. So, it's, it's going on, it's bad, and I think that Vicki was, I'm not sure what happened. I better not say anything about that because I don't really know what happened, what happened there, but it's some bad things that happened, and I appreciate what you're doing right now, okay? So, thank you for listening. All right, and I'm, I'm, I pray for you guys. Y'all probably don't believe that, but I do. God bless you, baby.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So, just, just to clarify, with staff interaction, I think there is a little confusion about when you invite or when you direct, and staff is confused right now, too, because all the invites previously would have come from a council member to me, and then I would kind of guide the council member on what needed to happen, such as if you're gonna take staff somewhere like you did to St. John's, you requested that through, and I guided you through that, and that's not happening now. I think when a council member goes to a staff member and says, "Hey, I'd like to take you somewhere. I just learned tonight that there's staff members involved out at the Space View Park. I didn't know anything about that." So, that's kind of where the disconnect is right now between council and, and staff, and staff will always try to support you, but they're confused on what's going on right now.
Member Stokel.
Yes, just to touch on that, I think that I'm fine with the rules coming before us, but I think it's really going to be up to us to have these uncomfortable conversations because I do think that there, as our city manager just mentioned now, I, I do think that, I don't, there is a lot of, I don't know what it is. I have not felt this way in eight years of serving on here before. I, I hear a lot of different stories. I, I, I don't know. And so, I, I think ultimately, staff needs to feel comfortable to do their jobs. I think our direction should come from, to the city manager, like, we make that decision. I think to Member Nelson's point, one remedy that I feel like could happen is, I think had you just mentioned, "Hey, I'm going to NASA, you know, next week or in two weeks. I'd like to bring some staff members along. Are you, council, okay with me working with the city manager to get a list?" And then we would just vote on that and say yes, and that's perfectly fine. So, I, I do feel like you are really working on communicating, especially on social media and wanting to do that. Sometimes, for me at least, it just feels like it's you communicating your message, and it doesn't feel like we. It's, it's, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, and it's, it's, it does, it feels divided. And so, I think just as you're doing, and you're doing a lot of things, you're bringing up a lot of great ideas, which I really appreciate. It's just if you, we can have those conversations, like, if there's things that are going to happen in the next two weeks, for instance, that you want to work on, and just say, "Hey, these are some things I'm working on. I might need some staff on this. Would you guys support me in this? Is this direction we're going?" And we're like, "Yes, this is great. We're moving forward," just like we had with the healthcare presentation. I don't know any of those verbiage, that verbiage, but I was like, "That was very informative, and I really appreciated your take on it." So, I think for me, it's just, it, it's been tough navigating what's been true personally, and I think just feeling like we are, we, I feel like we're divided right now, and I don't like that feeling, especially as we're getting ready to go into hiring a new city manager. We all need to kind of get on that same page. So, I think, yeah, we'll get the rules, and I think just us having this conversation, how we're all feeling. Do we feel supported? Do we feel like we are getting information from our city manager when we ask questions? I think we just talk about it. Unfortunately, we have to do it in the public, but, I mean, yeah, so I, I appreciate the comments that were made, and that we just continue to have those conversations. If you feel like you're able to do your job effectively, if you feel like you're getting, not, if nobody's responding to you, and so, we just talk about those things. So, I think all of us up here want to make a difference and want to move things forward, and we want to support each other.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson, if you had.
And I think, too, you know, when we do these kind of things, when we look at these kind of things, we have to figure out, is there a public purpose? What is the public purpose? And make that kind of decision. But Andrew, when you go off on your own, there's nothing there. So, I, I, but I think, too, that we have never really talked about what the rules are, and so, to me, having it as one document helps, where we sit down and say, "These are the rules. These are why we want these rules here," whatever they are. And I'm sure I don't know all the rules, but I think we do need to know the rules.
I'm a big fan of knowing what the rules are, so I can know how to conduct myself and also play within those rules. Member Moscosa.
Yeah, I appreciate hearing your side of the story. I think being new to council, it's difficult because you get up here and then you cannot talk to anyone, and so, it, it is a huge learning, for me, it's been a huge learning curve, and also just learning with the, the city manager and the city attorney of how to navigate that as well. And so, for me, that's something I'm looking for in, in a city manager, that if I am breaking the rules, that they will tell me and stop me. And so, whether that's happening or not happening, I think that's important because although we oversee and we direct the city manager, I also need, "Hey, this is not how it works, the city attorney. These are the rules. You, you cannot do this. You will be violating if you do that." So, I need that direction, and, and I've been given that at times. And I will add another thing. One of my concerns, too, is our kind of modes of communication within our city. I think, you know, I think sometimes we're seeing, I'm curious, too, how much staff time is spent on mayor's minute and, and all of these videos that are being produced, and, and how that gets approved. So, that's one of the questions I've had is, well, what if I want to go out and make a video, and, but what if it contradicts what you say? Like, how, how do we, how do we, how do we deal with that? And so, I think that's something good for us to look at, you know. Do we have a policy on how we use social media? I love that you're communicating, I mean, Sarah, you're out communicating, you're communicating. We're all doing it in, in different ways, but, you know, I think we have to discuss these things, you know, do we have equal access and, or how, how is this working, and what content are we, are we pushing out? Because sometimes I don't know until I see it, and it's coming from the city, the city's social media, and so, I think it's very different if it's coming from your private page versus coming from the city. So, that's something I, I wanted to bring up as well.
Absolutely, and I can tell you how that all came about. I was recording videos on my own, and the PR department said, "Hey, we have this whole studio not being used. You want to come shoot a video in here?" Okay, so, that's how that worked.
But how did it get through the city's social media?
How, I'm sorry, what was the question?
So, like, instead of you just saying, "Oh, I'll help you shoot that video. I'll put it through my social media. Like, I have my own page." How did it get put through? Like, what was the process of saying, "Hey, could you put this through the city of Titusville's official page?"
I did not ask that. They did that on their own. Vice Mayor Cole.
Yeah, I do think we need to, when we speak, we have to speak as five and not speak as one, because if I say something, and I am, believe me, I am very careful what I say. I was a base commander at one of Robbins Air Force Base. However, I never said anything without going through my public affairs officer because I didn't want to say the wrong thing. So, I'm saying that we need to speak with one voice, and I agree that if one of us says something and somebody else says something different, then we're giving a conflicting view of what we're doing up here. So, we, I think we need to be very careful as elected officials that we represent the city as five and not as one.
Member Moscosa.
I'll just add, too, for, like, for when the news contacts us, and I didn't think about this because when I made the motion for the right to clean water, the news contacted me the other day, and I think that was like my first meeting, and I did it, and we don't really have any rules about that that I know of, but I would like, when things like that happen, that it goes through our city, that they're directed to know about this, that the news has contacted me. And I wasn't aware of it, and I looked back and I thought, even though it was, you know, a decision I made and they wanted a, a statement from me, and it didn't represent the city, I should have, you know, asked, "Hey, the, the news contacted me," and so, maybe that's something we can look at, too, is when those inquiries come up, how do we handle it? Because in that case, you really are speaking for the city.
Vice Mayor.
Just to give an example, I was coming in the city hall, it may have been last week or the week before, and Channel 2 was outside, and they asked me for a comment, and I told them they had to go through our public information officer because I was not going to give a comment, because if I gave a comment, I'd be speaking for all of us, and I can't speak for all of us unless we have agreed that I can speak for all of us.
City Attorney, did you have something?
No, sir. I mean, y'all covered it. I was just gonna reiterate, you know, you are individuals, and you can always have your individual opinions, but it's always, as council members, you can't speak for council unless council's authorized you to speak for council. And I think you covered that, that, you know, when you, if you speak and it's your opinion, you need to qualify those kind of comments so that it's clear you're not speaking for the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Was there a motion made? Okay, was there a second?
There was.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager.
Onto, I have two action items for you.
Sorry, I wasn't done with council reports. Yeah, because we were, that was a long time on one. I had some, a couple items.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. One is, I'm sure you guys all saw the BAA meeting. I would like to request potentially advisability on decisions made by BAA can come before council for appeal. We have a, that's our only board where those decisions are binding, and other cities and municipalities have it where they can appeal to their city council. So, I was interested in potentially having our city attorney look into what that would look like.
Member Nelson.
I would prefer to have it go to circuit court because, especially in this case, the, the issue is standing, and whether the individuals have standing to address this issue, and so far, I haven't found any attorneys that say, "Yeah, they should have standing." So, to, to bring it before us, you have one attorney and four non-attorneys. So, I would rather see it go before a judge and have the attorney's weigh in.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about a particular case. I was talking about in general because our BAA board is of volunteers that serve on there, and just like sometimes, you know, P&amp;Z will make a recommendation, and we agree with it a lot of times, sometimes we don't. I think this, again, as we're elected by the people to represent, I, I feel like that they should have the right to appeal to city council, and just, I, I know what happens at other cities, so I would be interested in seeing what that would look like for us to change our ordinance.
I don't mind looking at it, but that would be, when it comes to, if BAA is looking at legal issues, it just doesn't seem to me right to put it before non-attorneys, where...
That board has a lot of non-attorneys on it, too, so.
I know.
Yeah, that's just my, I, I just wanted to put it out there. I think the latest situation just brought that to light. I, to be honest, I didn't know that we could have them appeal. I thought that one, there was no way that we could, but I found out it's just because of our code, so we can, we do have the right to change our code. So, I would be interested in it and just wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't know if there's any other comments, and then I have one more, if anybody has comments on that.
Well, if you're gonna make a motion, make a motion.
Well, okay. I move to, for advisability, for staff to look into having the BAA board, well, I guess, having BAA decisions potentially being able to be appealed to city council.
Sure, you want some information on the ability to do that?
Yes.
Maybe who does that?
Yes.
I'm not sure what you want.
Potentially changing our code so that they could appeal to city council.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion from out there? Mr. Johnson.
So, while he comes up, I saw, I just wanted to be clear, you can bring information on that, and you can tell me at that point whether you want to drag me to come back with an ordinance, if I can bring that information.
Yeah, I've been here, and I've, I've seen a lot of horrible things happen at, at city council meetings and, and in our, pardon?
I said city clerk. Sorry, Mr. Johnson, I did not mean to interrupt you. Continue.
Oh, okay. So, what I want to share with you is that we all want justice. We all want justice, and, and you can see me right now, I'm not getting any justice. I'm a, I'm, I'm like a policeman. I'm, I'm, I'm licensed by the state to protect the health and safety of the public, and yet I see horrible injustice here in Titusville. Like, y'all just floated away. Five, you know, Mr. Cole was talking about, you want to be united. Well, it seems like you're united in violating the law, for example, spraying women and children and babies with sewage. This is a horrible thing. In other words, if I were working for the city right now, I would probably be fired, and I would sue the city for what you're doing. That's what I would do. In many cases, I would, I would be, whether I worked for the county or the city, I worked for both of them, but if, if necessary, I would just say, "You have to fire me," because the truth is the truth. And right now, is what you're going is, is you're going unanimously on things that were completely untruthful and unsafe. So, please consider what I say. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Member Stokel.
Yep, and then, did we vote already?
No.
Okay, no, then.
Any further discussion on the advisability? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Member Stokel, you still have the floor.
Yes, my last item would be, my request is for city council to start thinking about an interim city manager. As we know, Mr. Larice, he could potentially be, have one more meeting with us, and I don't want to not be ahead of what, whatever's potentially going to be happening. So, if, if anybody has ideas of interim city manager as we go through this process, if you want to share it now, if you, my request would be, at least by next meeting, we have that discussion of what we want to do moving forward. I know we just hired on the firm. I, I think that timeframe said four months, so we just need to talk about what we want to do as a city since we're in March.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscosa, did you have anything? Okay. Member Nelson.
I believe Mr. Larice agreed to stay on until the new person comes in.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, that is very possible, but I think we also should reconsider all of our options, because I know from being a hiring manager and supervising a lot of people, usually once people give their notice, they have one foot out the door, and I think it would be behoof of us to consider looking at, bringing in an interim to give fresh eyes on what's going on in the city from an operations standpoint, and then hopefully, they can give us the information to tailor our search to our deficiencies. That would be my recommendation. Member Stokel.
Yeah, and not only that, I don't know if we have anybody that's internal that maybe will be applying, and so, that would potentially give this person opportunity to test it out and try. it out and try, um, to see if they would potentially like that position too. I just think that we, we're not going to have Mr. Larisse. He's going to be leaving us. And I think we need to start thinking about what will our city look like if there is somebody that's internal that potentially would be interested. Um, I don't know. I just, I, I want us to have that discussion to see. So I don't know how everybody else is thinking. So.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Be thinking about that and we'll talk about it at our next meeting, I guess. Anything else, Member Stokoe? All right. Member Moscoso?
So I would like to, um, bring up Apollo Gardens and, um, just give you guys a little bit of background on that.
Megan, can I interrupt you for a quick second?
Yes.
It is 10:27. So I'm assuming you're going to go longer than three minutes. And I hate to cut you off once you got going.
Yeah.
So can you make a motion?
Sure.
I'd move to extend the meeting to 10:40. And if anybody talks
Second.
Pass out.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion, any committee from the crowd? Or I thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Megan?
So I do want to give you guys a, a little bit of history. Um, you know, I do live on DeMarit Drive. It is classified as a local street. And, um, April of 2023, we found out about a development that was administratively approved by our, um, actually by Peggy Busaka, who is no longer, she's actually on contract with the city, but she's no longer the planning director. And so, you know, we came through, we, city council, P and Z, and we were told that there was nothing we could do, that you guys could do, because it was already administratively approved. During that time, um, that developer came and sued two residents. They sued me for $27 million. I had a panic attack that night. And they sued another resident. They ended up dropping it against me, but they held it against, um, one of my neighbors who eventually moved. But what they also did is they took the, um, public comments from my neighbors, um, which is protected speech. And they put it in, um, in the lawsuit and said, if you speak out against this, um, you, you will, we are, we might, we might sue you for this. And so that scared the entire neighborhood. I mean, when you get a $27 million lawsuit, i- it's quite scary. So anyway, that's kind of the history. So the only option the neighbors had was to go before the BAA and to, to appeal the process. And, um, and that's why I haven't spoke on this topic before, because I didn't want to use this as a, a platform to speak on it. But since it has gone to the BAA, and so what happened is the BAA did not hear it. So the one opportunity that the, the community had to appeal a, a really, I mean, to be honest, we've had Brad on record saying, oh, this is a local road. And I think we all know our comprehensive plan, a multifamily development cannot go on a local road. And I don't know how many times I've made Brad say it on the record. It's been my mission. But, but that being said, the community didn't have the opportunity to get up and to at least plead the case. And so I think that is, the, the major issue is, you know, when we make a decision, whether the public likes it or not, they, they, it has to be accepted. It's made by the board. But the, the, the residents there didn't even get the chance to have it heard. And so for me, that, that was really hard. And so we have a lot of people in our community who are quite angry about it because I personally feel, and Mr. Broom might disagree, because I've heard him disagree in court over this, that that's not a local road. Is it, do you, would you consider it a local road, Mr. Broom?
I, I don't have any reason why.
I mean,
I assume it's a local road.
Is, DeMarit, would you say DeMarit Drive is a local road?
I would assume. Isn't that staff's position?
Not assume, is it a local road?
I mean, I assume, like I said, I'm a staff, I'm a, I don't even have
You see, he's not, he's not going to answer.
No.
And I understand.
I assume it's a local road.
No, you assume, your brother owned a house on that. Is it a local road or is it not?
If it's not a collector arterial, it would be a local.
So could you say DeMarit Drive is a local road?
Sure.
Okay. Please say it.
I've never.
This is what we've been fighting. Can I be honest? If you under, if you wonder why sometimes I question them, it's because of this. Do you see how difficult it is for Mr. Broom to say this? Then say it. I mean, I, this is my, and, and I'm so sorry to do this in public, but this is my frustration of, it's very simple. Is it a local road?
I have no, I was telling you, I have no reason to say it's not a local road. I...
Then say it's a local road.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean.
That, this feels like gaslighting, but I think everyone understands what this exercise is, is this is the frustration. This is what we've been dealing with. And the only opportunity the residents had was to go before the BAA. Because this was, this wasn't his fault. This wasn't Mr. Larisse's fault. This was somebody who administratively approved. And instead of the city saying, we made a mistake on this, they'd rather the residents fight it and be sued over it and have to bring it forward. So I feel like we've been gaslit over this issue for two and a half years. And to be quite frank, I'm, I'm tired of it, that I can't get you to say this one simple phrase, because you know what that means. So I just wanted to kind of put that out. And I think you guys understand, I feel like if that project came before city council, it wouldn't get passed through. But the fact that it goes this other way, i- it's almost like a loophole. So I, I appreciate what you said about the BAA. It's a, it's an extremely important board. When we put people on that board, I mean, it can't just be, this is my friend, this is whatever. It has to be people, because this is dictating an entire neighborhood. I mean, we're putting it in the hand of, of five volunteers that are not elected. And so I appreciate that because, you know, it might not affect this, this project, but it could help in the future. So I appreciate you seeing the foresight in that.
Thank, thank you, Member Moscoso. Uh, Member Nelson, Vice Mayor Cole, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay. All righty. The city manager.
Onto, I have two action items. Uh, the budget workshop and public hearings. Staff is requesting council's direction in scheduling a budget workshop and public hearings for the FY26 budget. Public hearings have only a primary date listed due to advertising and potential conflicts with the school board and/or county dates. Following dates are available and do not conflict with the Brevard County or school board hearing dates. So what I need you to do is kind of look at your calendars and let's lock in the budget workshop proposed dates of primary being, uh, Thursday, 7 August at 5, or the secondary, 14 August at 5.
Yes. I would like to go with the primary. Uh, the secondary, the August 14th is during the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. So I would prefer the 7th if possible.
Me too.
7th of August?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Seems like the primary, I believe, would work for everybody, right?
And the, uh, public hearing and final public hearing are, again, staff de-conflicted it with the school board and the county. So, um, we're proposing the 11th of, uh, September, which is a Thursday at 5:30. And the final public hearing, uh, 18 December, which is also a Thursday at 5:30.
Any issues with either one of those dates?
Everybody good? Okay.
Could you repeat that again?
Uh, 11 September, which is a Thursday
Okay.
At 5:30. And the second, uh, final public hearing, uh, 18 December, which is also a Thursday at 5:30.
If it were up to me, I would, uh, prefer to go with the, the 18th. Oh, sorry. They're both on there. I'm sorry. I thought that was one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Never mind. You gotta be both of them.
So just to confirm, um, the budget workshop was now scheduled for the 7th of August at 5:00 PM. The first public hearing is scheduled for 11 September at 5:30. And the final public hearing is 18 September at 5:30.
Yes.
My second item, staff is requesting council's direct, direction in scheduling a facilitated FY26 strategic planning session to receive council's input regarding the revisions to the current city's strategic plan based on citizen feedback received during the most recent round of city council citizen public engagement sessions. This workshop will be facilitated by Kristin Baki of Lee Brevard. The following two dates are for your consideration. The first date, 10, uh, April, which is again a Thursday at, uh, between 5 and 8. And the secondary, um, proposal is the 15th of April, uh, Tuesday, between 5 and 8 as well.
Member Stokoe?
I will not be able to do it if it's on April 10th. So.
Member Moscoso?
I won't be able to do it if it's on April 15th. So.
I knew it was coming.
Yeah. Can we do, um, I, I don't know what the other days would be.
Yeah, we had, we were, that's really only when Kristin is available, so.
I don't know.
I'm okay if, um, to sit out if you want to do it. I mean, if that date works for you, I'm okay.
We need to have everybody here.
Yeah, I appre, I think we all need to be here. So I would appreciate having.
Yeah. When you say that's the only day, can, do we, can we move it back some? Like, does it need to happen in April? Could it be, I, I don't know.
We could go back and get some more dates, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll come back to council at the next meeting with some, uh, dates other than the 15th and the 10th.
Okay. Thanks.
And.
I mean, you know, Scott, you could actually just find the dates and then email us and so we can make the decision prior to the next meeting, if you want to.
I have to do it in a public meeting.
Huh?
I have to do it in a public meeting.
Oh, okay. I understand. Okay. I mean, you have to make the date in public meeting? Or do you have to advertise it for a public meeting?
You're making the decision, so I can't pull council.
Okay. Okay.
Um, final items or information items for you and subject to your questions. Any questions?
See none. All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
Shall I do it, Sharon?
Sure. No, he didn't include it.
Sure. I just, just wanted to clarify, Miss, Member Moscoso, I wouldn't, trying to play word games, I was letting you know, it's, I have no reason to say it's not a local road. I, it's a local road. It's hard to say that. So.
You didn't say it, so.
Huh? Yeah. I'm, I'm not saying I have no reason to.
I have a motion to adjourn. We're out. Thank you.